For a written transcript of this meeting, or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the Clerk to the Commission's office at 404-612-8232.
Good morning, everyone. I'd like to call the recess meeting of the Board of Commissioners to order. Today is May 19, 2021. It is 10 o'clock a.m. Madam Clerk, please call the roll for purposes of quorum.
Chairman Rob Pitts.
Present.
Commissioner Liz Hausman.
Present.
Commissioner Bob Ellis.
Present.
Commissioner Lee Morris.
Present.
Vice Chair Natalie Hall.
Present.
Commissioner Maureen Arrington, Jr. Commissioner Khadijah Abdul-Rahman.
Present.
Mr. Chairman, you have a quorum.
Thank you. Please rise for the invocation, followed by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Let us pray. Almighty God, we are grateful for this day, for your grace and mercy upon our lives. We pray now your peace and your power upon your people. We pray that you direct us to do justly, love mercy, and walk humbly before you. Bless now our leaders; give them your direction and wisdom. It is in your name we humbly pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God and the visible with liberty and justice for all. Before we get to the agenda, I received a telephone call, at least my office did, and I ran into Councilmember Joyce Shepherd, and I think where it's Commissioner Arrington had sent out a notice from him wanting to poll the board about a meeting with the Atlanta City Council regarding the city jail. And I'm not sure what we'd be meeting about, but I said I would ask the board today and communicate with them whether or not there's any interest in meeting with a committee of the city council to talk about the jail. I'm not sure what there is to talk about, but they want to meet tomorrow. So what's your pleasure? Well, would you poll everybody before we leave today so we can communicate? Okay.
Yes.
Mr. Chairman, is that the only date suggested?
That's, well, there may be other dates, but that was a preferable date.
It said Thursday, the 26th, which was really Wednesday, the 26th. I don't know.
And I'll be honest with you, what I said to her was until the city of Atlanta, and the city of Atlanta includes the mayor and the city council, until they make a decision as to whether they're going to sell or lease that facility to us, I'm not sure what we're talking about. Yeah, that's fine. And they have, they can take a vote there. So it's whatever the board decides to do, and I will communicate back to them. But you'll poll everybody, and we can let them know at the end of the meeting today.
Mr. Chairman, yeah, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. I understand it's a work session that they want us to be a part of, and I think in maybe fairness, maybe which.
I believe from the email I got, it was a work session that they want us to be a part of, and I think in all fairness, we need to be a part of that so everyone knows kind of where we stand. And publicly, I don't have a problem. It's just I have a conflicting schedule.
Poll the board and give me an answer or tally. If tomorrow doesn't work, give me some other dates, and I can transfer it. Let them know then.
Well, again, Mr. Chairman, they had suggested Thursday, the 26th. So it's either Thursday, or it's Wednesday, the 26th. If we could find out, did you check, Jen? Okay. About that possible date, but we need clarity about which date, which date are they? Are we talking about Thursday, the 27th, or Wednesday, the 26th? If we can find that out in part of the polling, that would be helpful, too.
Okay, you got it. Thank you, ma'am. Continue, Madam Clerk.
On page two, Consent Agenda. 2-1-0347, Adoption of the Consent Agenda. All matters illicit on the consent agenda are considered routine by the county commission and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion will take place on these items. If discussion of any consent agenda item is desired, the item will be moved to the recess meeting agenda for separate consideration. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have one item to be removed for separate consideration on page three. 2-1-0353, Finance. Ratification of the April 2021 Grants Activity Report. This item was moved, removed by Vice Chair Hall.
Any other items on the consent agenda?
If not, Mr. Chairman, I'm move approval.
All right, the motion to approve is a second?
Second.
All right, props are moved, and second, cast your vote, please.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes unanimously. On page four. Recess Meeting Agenda. 2-1-0358, Adoption of the Recess Meeting Agenda. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we have amendments to today's recess meeting agenda. Item to be removed and moved to the June 2 regular meeting. On page four. 2-1-0362.
362.
362, on page four. At the bottom is a public hearing in connection with the proposed issuance by the Industrial Development Authority of County of La Paz, Arizona, of one or more series of its charter school lease revenue bonds. That item will, that public hearing will be moved to the June 2 meeting. Items to be revised. On page seven. 2-1-0374, Community Development. Request approval for resolution to authorize the adoption and approval of the 2021 HUD Annual Action Plan. This item was revised to amend the CDBG allocation amounts. And on page eight. 2-1-0382. Discussion and Resolution. Deposits in Minority Financial Institutions Sponsored by Chairman Pitts. This item was revised to include a resolution.
And Commissioners, on the CDBG item, we simply received additional funding from HUD, an additional $20,000, and so we're adding that to the action item.
Anything else? Anyone else? All right, just a minute. So the 21-0382, the Resolution Regarding Financial Institutions, if no objections, let's take that after the CFO makes her report, after the COVID report, when she gives her... Move that up. All right, put your motion.
Motion to approve with those revisions.
Second.
All right, props are moved, and second, cast your vote, please.
And the vote is open.
Thank you.
And the motion passes unanimously.
All right, continue, Madam Clerk.
2-1-0359, Ratification of Minutes. Recess Meeting Minutes, April 21 regular meeting post agenda minutes, May 5, and Special Call Meeting Post Agenda Minutes, May 7, 2021.
Move approval.
I'll second. Vote, please.
Commissioner Ellis. And the vote is open.
I'm sorry, Commissioner Ellis. What?
He's second.
Oh, I'm sorry. Cast your vote. Properly moved and seconded.
And motion passes six shades zero nays. 2-1-0360, Presentation of Proclamations and Certificates. First proclamation is recognizing Tom Lowe, Atlanta Fulton Water Treatment Plant Appreciation Day, sponsored by Commissioner Hausman with full board support.
Got some slow colleagues this morning. Give them a minute to come down. And while we're doing this, I want to just make sure that everyone knows that we recently lost Commissioner Lowe's wife, Betty Lowe, who served this county very well for many, many years, and I just wanted to acknowledge her service to our county and make sure the public knows that we lost her recently. And now I'm going to read this proclamation that recognizes 30 great years of service to the community by our water treatment plant up in North Fulton County that is named after Commissioner Tom Lowe. Whereas the Tom Lowe Atlanta Fulton Water Treatment Plant is a 90 million gallon water treatment plant that serves North Fulton and the Sandy Springs area and has been in operation since May of 1991 as a joint venture of Fulton County and the city of Atlanta as the Atlanta Fulton County Water Resources Commission. And whereas the Tom Lowe Atlanta Fulton County Water Treatment Plant processes raw water withdrawal, raw water storage, thank you for whoever wrote that, reservoir withdrawal for pretreatment, alum and pre-chlorine pretreatment, pre-mixing and flocculation, sedimentation, filtration, and post-chlorine lime phosphate fluoride post-treatment. Wow, they do a lot there. Whereas the Tom Lowe Atlanta Fulton Water Treatment Plant has won several awards, including the American Water Works Association Director's Award from 2010 to 2013, the Georgia Association of Water Professionals 10 Year Platinum Award from 2004 to 2013, the National Safety Council Occupation Excellence Achievement Award in 2013, and the Georgia Department of Labor Award of Excellence in 2013. And whereas the Tom Lowe Atlanta Fulton County Water Treatment Plant honors the late commissioner who served the North Fulton County for 40 years and was instrumental in the negotiation of the water withdrawal permit with the Environmental Protection Division and acquisition of the land and construction of the water treatment plant that now bears his name. And whereas the Tom Lowe commitment to the Atlanta Fulton County Water Resources Commission helped to realize the vision of a regional water treatment facility to ensure adequate water supply for the growing population needs of North Fulton well into the future. So now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners applauds the Tom Lowe Water Treatment Plant for its dedication to providing clean drinking water to the citizens of Fulton County and celebrates its 30th anniversary of operation and does hereby proclaim Saturday, May 15, 2021, as Tom Lowe Atlanta Fulton County Water Treatment Plant Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Congratulations, and we have the director here, Kathy Cruz.
Thank you, Commissioner. I'm David Clark. I'm the Director of Public Works. On behalf of Kathy Cruz, who's the general manager and operator of the plant, we certainly appreciate this. You know, there's a lot of things that sometimes government gets criticized that they can't do well, especially when you get more than one agency together, but this operation, the plan of the last 30 years as a joint venture between the city of Atlanta and Fulton County really dispels that statement because it works extremely well. 90 million gallons a day of reliable water is always available, thanks to Kathy and her crew. The operation also done with a joint venture between Veolia and Coffra Engineering, which obviously is instrumental for Kathy to allow her to do what she needs to do. So we certainly appreciate all of this, and it is a great honor to be part of it as Public Works Director. Thank you, Kathy.
Thank you. Is that mine? Okay, I was getting ready to say.
This one's yours.
Okay. Walking away with it. No, I told David.
The next proclamation is recognizing Public Works Week, sponsored by Commissioner Hausman with full board support.
Good to read twice. Public Works is also one of the areas that I think Fulton County excels in overall, whether it's managing county YTS plus program or doing actual infrastructure work. So I'm real pleased to present this today. Whereas National Public Works Week is a week-long reminder of the many ways Fulton County Department of Public Works provides the basic foundation of our day-to-day comfort, including roadways, traffic control, sidewalks, water, sewer, and stormwater management. And whereas this year's theme, Stronger Together, recognizes that there would be no community without the quality of life Public Works provides and spotlights the key role of all employees play in the planning, building, and maintenance of infrastructure projects and services collectively known as Public Works. And whereas the Department of Public Works maintains sanitary sewer and water distribution systems, provides stormwater management services, provides water and pollution prevention education to residents, schools, communities, and businesses, maintains county roadways, traffic signals, and streetlights, and provides oversight for the tenants at the Fulton County Executive Airport at Brownfield by ensuring the maintenance of all buildings, access roads, runways, ramps, hangars, and parking lots at the airport facility. And whereas the Public Works provides critical response capabilities, experience, and support 24 hours a day, 365 days a year, and is committed to delivering excellent services to our community. And whereas the Fulton County Department of Public Works is considered one of the premier agencies in the state of Georgia, thanks to its dedicated staff and multi-award winning facilities. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Fulton County recognizes and commends the Department of Public Works for their continued dedication and public service to the county and hereby proclaims the week of May 16 through 2021 as Public Works Week in Fulton County, Georgia. Thank you and congratulations.
Thank you again, Commissioner. Again, David Clark, Public Works Director. On behalf of myself, Roy Barnes, who's in the audience, is Deputy Director over wastewater and Colette Banks, who oversees our education, we certainly appreciate this recognition. As the Commissioner said, this year's theme for Public Works Week is Stronger Together, and I can certainly say I don't think any more perfect theme could be after the year that our staff has gone through. I've always been very proud of what Public Works has accomplished, but given the challenges of COVID and the way that the staff stay dedicated to continue to serve Public Works needs throughout the county really makes my job easier, and I'm certainly glad that I represent them today. So appreciate the recognition, and we'll see you next year.
I'd like to add one more thing. This week, we had a ribbon cutting for our new manhole system along the Chattahoochee River in the Roswell area, and this new system will last 100 years, and it is a new technology that I want to thank Mr. Barnes for uncovering and bringing to Fulton County, the latest, greatest, and best technology that can stay submerged under flooded situations, what's happens quite frequently in that area, with no breaches. And so we're very, very happy about that situation. It's going to be really great for the community, but the longevity of it and the security of it together is really state-of-the-art, and I'm very proud of our team for bringing that to Fulton County.
The last proclamation is recognizing Ellis Kirby Appreciation Day, sponsored by the full board of commissioners.
All right. Come on down, cousin Ellis. So for those of you who don't know that, well, you know, let me read this, and then you'll learn a little bit more about my cousin Ellis Kirby here. So whereas Ellis Kirby joined Fulton County in 2016 as the Director of Real Estate and Asset Management and was later the first person to serve as Deputy Chief Operating Officer for Infrastructure. And whereas in his role, Ellis Kirby has been responsible for Fulton County's system of infrastructure, including public buildings, roadways, water and sewer systems, and technology. And whereas in his roles, Ellis Kirby has played a key role in the modernization and renovation of dozens of Fulton County facilities with special emphasis on improving sustainability and efficiency. And whereas in his roles, Ellis Kirby has been a partner and collaborator to virtually every department at Fulton County, ensuring that they had the infrastructure support to conduct their daily operations in service to citizens. And whereas key projects have included the first major renovation of Fulton County's Assembly Hall since 1989, the repair of the exterior of the Fulton County Courthouse, and the renovation of Central Library, which is fabulous, among many others. And whereas in addition to his professional accomplishments, Ellis Kirby is a proud father of two sons, Grant and Garrett, who enjoys biking and hiking. And whereas after five years of dedicated public service, Ellis Kirby will leave Fulton County for an opportunity in the private sector after making a tremendous impact on Fulton County's operations. Now therefore be it resolved that the Fulton County Board of Commissioners and all associated with the county manager's office commends the dedication exhibited by Ellis Kirby during his tenure with Fulton County Government and express our utmost appreciation for his service as a leader, colleague, and friend, and does hereby proclaim Wednesday, May 19, 2021, as Ellis Kirby Appreciation Day in Fulton County, Georgia. Let's give him a big hand. I miss you, brother.
You got, you got five more minutes to reconsider. It'll never get any better than this. Everybody is happy. You're the hero. Your employment is stable. I told Ellis when he informed us of this, that if I were the president, I could turn down his resignation. Of course, we can't do that, and it's a phenomenal opportunity for him, and it is, I won't reveal anything that I'm not supposed to, but it is going into a utility, and I told him as a 25-year executive of a utility, it doesn't get much better than that either. And I just want to say, in addition to everything that has been said, that Ellis should just been an instrumental part of our team and have done so much to professionalize what the public sees often as Fulton County. We know it's the employees and the people that desire to serve, but if they were walking into a facility that the HVAC was out, or the building roof was leaking, or just simply did not have curb appeal, that first impression made a huge, huge difference. And I can't say that anyone would have sweated the details, had the technical knowledge, but also had the camaraderie and leadership skills to really make all happen, what you did. And so I truly say that you, again, were one of the first folks that I was able to recruit, along with being able to position others for leadership, and you were, again, just instrumental in everything that we've been able to do, and I want to thank you personally.
Well, the good news is I didn't know this was coming, so I didn't prepare a speech, so it won't be long. But I remember my last job, the president, Houston Tillison in Austin, Texas, when he was leaving, I said, "I'm sorry to see you go, I mean, I wish you'd stay." He said, "Everybody has an expiration date, Ellis, it's okay." And he was actually coming back home to Atlanta. So today is the expiration day for me at Fulton County, but you will always be in my hearts here. You know, it was, God put me in the right place and the right time over the past five years. We did some great things together, and I won't remember Fulton County for what I did here. I will remember Fulton County for what you did for me. You know, I went through the three hardest years of my entire life, the last three years, and if it wasn't for the Fulton County family, I wouldn't have made it. And so I'm grateful for that. I'm grateful for this opportunity. I'm moving to Savannah, so I expect everybody to come to see me in Savannah when I get down there, okay? Because it seems like everybody comes to Savannah at least once a year, right? So thank you for this recognition, and thank you for the opportunity, Commissioners and leadership. I will probably never do something this amazing in my entire life and career, and you will always be a part of me. And Fulton County is the most diverse, largest county, you know, in the state, and I'm proud to know that I spent five years serving that and making it better. So thank you.
Thank you for the call. I appreciate it.
Can you make sure that Joe calls that, what you, the air purifier people? Because they haven't heard anything.
All right, Madam Clerk.
Continuing on page four, Public Hearings. 2-1-0361, Public Comment. Citizens wishing to participate in public comment will be allowed to appear in person or may choose to participate virtually via Zoom video conferencing or by submitting their comments in writing online by registering on the county website, www.fultoncountyga.gov. Speakers will be granted up to two minutes each. The public will not be allowed to yield or donate time to other speakers. The public comment portion of the meeting will not exceed 30 minutes. Mr. Chairman and members of the board, we will start with the speakers here in Assembly Hall. We have received 10 speaker cards. Will the first five speakers please come down? Greg Phan, former councilman Eddie Lee Brewster, Dan Copeland, Sharon Matthews, and former State Representative Doug Dean.
Okay, just a minute. So we have 10 here to speak. Now, colleagues, I've been advised that we have, how many is it, 100 and what?
104.
104 who have sent written comments. Is that correct?
That's correct.
And during COVID, what we did, we would read those. So we allow two minutes each, and we're going to have to make a policy decision what we do going forward with respect to written comments, whether we take them and distribute them among the board and not read them, that'll be a policy decision that we're going to have to make at some point. But after we hear from the 10 who are here today, we need to make a decision for today as to whether we're going to have each of the 104 read or not and just distribute it to us because they are in writing. So start thinking about that.
Let the people speak.
What?
Let the people speak.
No, they are going to speak.
All 104, though. They couldn't be here, but they submitted them, so they did want to be heard. So I would rather for them to be heard.
Well, that'll be a board decision. That's what I'm saying. The board can decide whether they, after we discuss it, how we want to proceed.
Thank you, Chairman Pitts and Commissioners.
Good to see you guys. Good to see you guys. Good to be back here. And Commissioner Hausman, I want to just say to you, thank you for what you did for Commissioner Tom Lowe. Wonderful. Tomlin, a wonderful man and wife. Thank you so much. He always supported employees with raises. He always did. And you know, I always ask for money for the employees. I'm here. Thank you so very, very much, and God bless you all. I want to just say, thank you all. Good to see you too after this. I hope all y'all got shots. But I want to just say that I'm here to support the American Rescue Resolution that is being sponsored today by Commissioner Khadija Abdi-Rahma. And this is, this money is coming down to help the citizens of Fulton County, to help the employees. And we ask them that you support this because the people at Wee Street Tower, even as I'm speaking right now, are being evicted from Wee Street Towers. And there are other people that are being evicted. So this money can help the people that your constituents, the people that you serve. And this is our money that they're giving to you to give back to us. And we certainly hope that you will support this resolution. And as always, I don't need two minutes. God bless you. God bless. God bless America. And Mr. Ellis, thank you for fishing these shells before you left here, because they were killing me for years. Amen. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Eddie Lee Brewster. I'm here representing the Fulton Atlanta Community Action Authority. I just wanted to say that we too are here to support the American Rescue Plan by Commissioner Khadija. But we also want to thank the Commission for what you have done for FACA as we tried to, during the pandemic, to really help Fulton County resident. Although that was, it's always a need. It's always a need. And we were really overwhelmed, but we, as I speak now, our employees right now are still trying to service all of Fulton County with the LIHE service rental assistance. But hopefully in the future that we can really improve up on that. But real, if we can really just, really think, right now, they have lifted the moratorium on eviction, so we're getting a lot of calls on people being evicted and threatening to be evicted. So there's always a need for funding, but we're going to do the best we can. But please consider passing this American Rescue Plan. It's really, really needed. We represent all your constituents, from Buckhead literate to Bankhead. We work with all the cities within the counties. We're here to serve everybody in Fulton County. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good morning, and to my good friend Marvin Everton. I want to say thank you. I'm here to support the distinguished lady from District Six, this rescue plan. I've been in southwest Atlanta approximately 20-some years. This would definitely help our community. There's a lot of things we can purchase with it. By the way, Rod, you know, there's a golf course down there in foreclosing in South Fulton. And also, there's a housing problem there too as well. So I ask you to please get behind me and help the distinguished lady with District Six here on the rescue plan. Thank you, sir.
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm going to kind of read from my notes because I know we're limited for the minutes here. I'm Sharon Matthews, and I'm a resident of Fulton County. My life, all my life, I've been here in Fulton County. I support the RIP plan to help our people and our businesses to get back on their feet. I know you held this item from the last meeting, but now is definitely the time to vote yes. Home mortgages, rental, and utility assistance will help our families in their homes. Grants to our small businesses will help keep moms and pop shops open. Family-owned businesses up and running. We have delayed this too long. I need you to help us and our community. So please vote yes on the rescue plan today. It's the right thing to do. Thank you all so very much. I do appreciate the time.
Morning, Chairman, Members of the Commission. I too join my colleagues in the vision, ain't you Khadija, for your effort, the American Rescue Plan. For the first time in the history of this country, Congress passed laws and then backed it up with the money. I'm impressed about this plan because for the first time, every district in this county will be impacted by this plan. There's something in this plan for every district. That means that there is a need in every district. I haven't been out in the public in three years because my wife suffered from leukemia she passed last year. And so I haven't, Mr. Chairman, been in the public in the last three years. We left Emory, went to MD Anderson in Houston. So I've been away from Atlanta. Got up last night, caught a bus here to Atlanta to come here to give my support for this particular plan. This is needed. If somebody, I mean, an elected, the latest president made money available, you've sent money back to Washington to occasion, and because we couldn't find individual agencies, cities would not be able to use the money, find individuals who needed the money. And I just want to say to my Councilman Marvin Everton, who's on board, from what I've read with this plan, and would like to just say to you and encourage you, this is something that is needed. People are getting evicted. People are losing their homes, even over in the Pittsburgh community where I live and represented for 20 years in the Georgia General Assembly. Let's don't miss this opportunity to do the right thing and to bring some help to the people who need it the most. Thank you for allowing me this opportunity. But I come back here after three years being away because we got problems in Atlanta. We need a new mayor, and we're going to get a new mayor, but we really need your help, showing that elected officials can help the most needed in our community. Thank you once again for allowing me the opportunity to speak before the Commissioner.
Next five speakers, please come down. Malika Rahman, Brandon Tanje, Devin Barrington Ward, Maggie Goldman, and Willie Clark.
Good morning. I am here to implore the Board of Commissioners, more specifically, the Commissioner of my district, Natalie Hall, Commissioner Natalie Hall, to vote yes on the Rescue Implementation Plan. As a homeowner, I know firsthand the hardships in this pandemic, and the hardships is placed on many people in Fulton County, the residents of Fulton County, and they need relief now. The pandemic may be over for some, but there is a looming deadline on all of us that will result in the displacement of numerous Fulton County residents. It is on you all to set an example for all of Georgia and the country. I want to remind the Board of Commissioners that your constituents never forget who stepped up to the plate and those who did not. Those who did the work to help and those who stood in the way. I hope today that you will all make the right decision and adopt the Rescue Implementation Plan. Thank you.
Good morning, Commissioners. I greet all of you, especially my Commissioner Natalie Hall, who represents me in the West End. It's a pleasure to see you. My name is Brandon Tanje. I'm a graduate of Morehouse College as well as Clarkland University. I've owned Lemonade Event Productions for 10 years now. And of course, my business has been impacted by the pandemic, right, as many of us have. But I do want to thank Commissioner Khadija for stopping by and visiting to learn how much the special events company and industry, which is really a service industry, has changed due to the pandemic and how we had to furlough bartenders, staff, waiters, florists, I mean, you name it. And these are people and their families who need this help most. So example, really quickly, as far as finances, one client that we had was $20,000 due to the pandemic. Now, the revenue is less than 700, right? So that kind of shows you the people and the money that we are losing due to this pandemic. So today, you all can start the renewal of my business and other small businesses that are out there. One of them is my dad, who owns a small gym in Buckhead. He also had to lay off a lot of people during this time. And so we're talking about the people who are making the engine of the economy work, and we need that help. So if you can just help us out with passing the $206 million of our tax dollars that we definitely sent to Washington as we need it now to rebound in a very, very big way. So please vote to adopt the resolution to enact the Rescue Implementation Plan. Thank you for your time.
My name is Devin Barrington Ward, and I'm with the Black Futurist Group, who is an anchor for the Alliance to Close the Atlanta City Detention Center. And I'm here today to tell you all to wake up. I see you're drinking your coffee, Mr. Chairman, so I hope you're awake. The jail hasn't, this isn't a new problem at the city jail or at the county jail. The jail has been overcrowded since 2003. I was 13 in 2003. 2003, the jail has been overcrowded. Let's not sit here and act like this is a new problem, but it does require some new solutions. And those new solutions need to recognize that Atlanta doesn't have a crime problem, but we do have a poverty problem that we've colluded with for far too long. We have a poverty problem because this city is the number one city in the country for income disparity. We need to acknowledge that. We need to be real about that, and we need real solutions to change that. It is possible, in this county, to preserve public safety without the expansion of jails, without the expansion of the police force. It's possible because anything is possible in Fulton County, Mr. Chairman, as you like to say all the time. It's possible because anything is possible in Atlanta. So that means it's possible to reduce the jail population in Fulton County to 1,000 people, as District Attorney Fannie Willis campaigned on during the primaries last year, that we can reduce the population at the county jail to 1,000 people. We can also adopt the recommendations of the Fulton County Mental Health and Justice Task Force, which has called for several recommendations on scaling up mental health services in the county because the county jail is our biggest mental health facility, and that's a shame. We can adopt the recommendations of the task force to close the city detention center. We can demand that the judiciary actually expedite trials and ensure that people have right to due process and right to a speedy trial and aren't just sitting and languishing in our jails. We can increase conflict resolution. We can increase the money to pad policing alternatives and diversion initiatives. But we can't do that if we're not even willing to sit down and meet with our counterparts at the city council. And so it's really important that we sit down and meet, not just because they're going to sell or lease to you, Mr. Chairman. Sit down and meet because the constituents of Fulton County and the city of Atlanta demand it. Thank you.
Do you need to start the clock? My name is Maggie Goldman, and I live in Johns Creek, District 1. I'm disappointed to see that the Commission will not be voting on any resolutions today regarding the role of the Commission in hiring and firing in regards to the Elections Board. We simply cannot give up any authority that will help the Commission protect Fulton voters. When I think about the risks of the state taking over Fulton's Elections Board, I think about what happens if this one single election superintendent refuses to certify any of Fulton's votes in a future election, since only the Elections Board holds that role. Would election tallies have to be completed without Fulton's votes at all in a future election? That would truly be disenfranchising our voters. And don't think it can't happen. Our former president literally called everyone he thought he could influence to change votes. This is a serious concern, and I wish some of the Commissioners would take it more seriously. It's also my understanding that in March, the Commission voted to approve certain priorities for the American Rescue Plan funds. Commissioner Khadija has carefully crafted a plan in consultation with Commissioners, attorneys, and Fulton staff to implement the very priorities that were approved in March. There was a request at the last meeting to wait to approve until input could be gathered from the mayors. I personally listened live to the May 7 meeting, and this topic was barely brought up. Therefore, I don't see any major objections from the mayors. If you say, "What's the rush?", I'd say, "You've already approved the priorities. You're going to spend the money in this manner regardless of when it arrives, and there's absolutely nothing wrong with being prepared with an action plan in hand when the money does arrive." Thank you.
Good morning, Chairman Pitts, other county commissioners. My name is Willie Clark. I'm an employee here at Fulton County. I'm an employee with the Task Commissioner's Office. The purpose of my coming here this morning is to address something that we speak about a lot in the office as far as some type of incentive, a bonus for employees. As you know, during COVID, there was only a couple of departments that was here throughout the entire time of COVID. The Task Commissioner Department was one of those departments. We here, we was here every day, sometimes ahead of time, and we stayed late in order to make sure our collection rate for property tax was above that of 2019, and we were very successful. At that time, when we were coming in early, leaving late, we were promised that we would receive some type of bonus for meeting our quotas. That never happened. Now we're ending the first half of the year, and we still have no word on whether or not we would be compensated. I do understand that the money that was given for people that was affected by Corona's, what do you call the, the police department, the sheriff department, we were not entitled to that because of the way it was worded. But I understand that there are new funding that employees of Fulton County can be recognized and given bonuses for our work, and we haven't, that haven't happened. And in the Task Commissioner's Office, our starting salary for entry level is so low that we barely can afford to live in the county in which we serve taxpayers. Lot of us worked two jobs in order to make it, and because we're not getting a living wage, and yet we still haven't got any recognition for coming in every day and performing our jobs. And I'm happy to be an employee of Fulton County, very proud to be an employee of Fulton County. But I just think Fulton County needs to do something to recognize us.
No further speakers here in Assembly Hall.
Okay, back to the question that opposed earlier today, and in the absence of a policy, I'd like some direction from you. We have in excess of 100 who have submitted written comments. So we want to have the comments read into the record, or we have a copy of the comments, and there may be others. So what's your pleasure? But after today, though, I'd like for us to take a position on how we're going to proceed going forward. But for today, what's your pleasure?
Well, Chair, can I just say, today, can we at least have them read today and going forward, put a policy in place, only to not disenfranchise those that, because we are still in a pandemic, and they had, they thought they had this option. So today, yeah, today, but going forward, we change the policy.
Any objections to hearing from having the comments of the 100-plus read into the record today?
No objection at all, but we should always hear from our constituents.
Any objections? Hearing none. So 100 times two is, what is that? 200 minutes divided by 60, that's about, what is that? You do math. About three hours? Call it fine. Yeah, it's all right.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I would ask that the current policy be distributed to the Commissioners as a reminder, and I'm trying to remember myself, but it seems like it's 30 minutes. So there would be, if we had 100 people here, it would be our discretion to change that policy if we wanted to hear from all 100 people. So, you know, we put that policy in place a few years ago for a reason. So we either, I think we need to revisit the entire policy. If we're going to make, to make exceptions, that's our prerogative, like I said, but I do think, whatever the policy is, we should stick to it.
I agree with that, but for today, unless there's some objection, we will hear from the 100 be read into the record. And I'd ask, am I still on? Oh, I'm sorry. So let's, let's not debate this now. I'm going to rule that we will, we will here have them, some may be two minutes, some may be one minute, but it'll be approximately a couple of hours before all is read into. So let's not debate it. So let's not debate it, and we will come up with, revisit the policy, the 30-minute policy, if we make adjustments going forward, that's fine. You still want to be heard?
Yes, I just want to remind everyone that we heard over 200 of our citizens speak in 2019 about the HUD funding, and I think that we should always hear from our citizens. We should never mute them at all. We are here to listen to them, and that's the bottom line. They voted us in to hear from them.
All right. Mr. Carver?
Yes, sir.
What time is it now?
It is...
Where is it? We need that clock. Where is Mr. Kirby? You still have three more days. We need this clock. Where is it? Oh, okay, all right. Is it in our drawer? Oh.
Mr. Chair, I'll just say we have routinely gone past the 30 minutes, so I'm in agreeance that we need to go forward. And I guess we need to talk about that policy, because we've always gone over 30 minutes. I've been here, I guess this is my seventh year, and we've always gone over that 30-minute policy. So it seems obsolete, along with several other procedural rules that we have.
Now, what I'm also saying, now, we're agreeing to hear from everybody. So it's seven of us up here, so let's the seven of us sit here and listen to what's being said. Mr. Carver, you on?
Yes, sir, I am. The first of our public comments are-
Speak up, Mr. Carver.
Sir, can you hear me better now?
Little more, little more.
Okay, how's that? Okay, awesome. The first of our public comments is from Mary Quarterman of Roswell. "I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this."
Colleagues, just a minute, Mr. Carver. Mr. Carver, just a moment, please. I've been informed that Mr. Parker from MARTA is here who has a presentation to make, and he has to leave by 12:00. We won't be halfway through this. These are written comments, so we're not inconveniencing anyone. We will hear their comments, but what I'd like to propose is that we hear from Mr. Parker, and then get back to hearing, having the comments from the public read into the record. Any objections to that, since Mr. Parker's here? Well, we can make it a motion.
Amending the agenda.
All right. Motion to amend the agenda to allow for Mr. Parker to speak at this time. Any objections? Hearing none. It's approved. Mr. Parker, come on down. You have a limited amount of time. We're always welcome and glad to hear from you.
Good morning, Chairman, and members of the Fulton County Commission. You know, I offer to deviate from my normal presentation. I do have a presentation with about 20-ish slides. I suggest, if it's okay with the commission, that I just submit it for you to review, and if there's any questions, we can talk later. And I'll just take about two minutes to, you can even start the timer if you'd like, to allow me only two minutes. So, you know, we are in the middle of our budget process. I'd like to thank our board members who are here virtually watching this, particularly the ones from Fulton County, for their support. If you could go to whoever controlling the slide, there is a question slide, and there's one slide right before that. I don't know the slide number. It's not at the very end, because we have some extra slides in there, but this is, I think, the most important slide to show you. We're in the middle of our budget process. I want to assure the commission that we are fiscally sound. We are moving forward with some public hearings around our budget. We have sufficient funds to make sure that we can continue our operation. And the slide that I want to show you, which is a few more going forward, shows the capital projects that we're focusing on here in Fulton County, and making sure that we are submitting and meeting the projects that we committed to in the 15th Amendment. It's a little farther at the end of this group of slides. Keep going. It's about four or five more slides here. Couple more. Right here, this one right here. So this is a summary of the budget highlights that is incorporated into our current requested budget that the board will be approving in July, in June, and will go into effect in the beginning of July. We have a significant investment in our station rehabilitation program, focusing on stations really in order of age. The stations on the south side of our system are older than the ones on the north side, so College Park and East Point are currently under design and will go into construction at the beginning, sometime in fiscal year 2022. We also continue to support the planning activities, both in South and North Fulton, around the BRT systems, meeting with the mayors. Particularly, we're focusing on South Fulton right now, meeting with the mayors about that scope of work and advancing that, so we can make sure we're prepared to advance those two important projects. We continue to invest in bus stop amenities around the system, and with the ultimate goal of over a five-year period, installing 1,000 new bus stop amenities throughout the jurisdiction. About a third of those are in Fulton County. And then finally, we have a significant investment in maintaining our infrastructure, our state of good repair, SGR, state of good repair projects, making sure that all of the equipment that's both used by our customers and supports our system is well-maintained. So I want to assure you that we are supporting the commitments that we made in our 15th Amendment. And really, that concludes my remarks. I think this is the most important piece of information for you to see. More than happy to have offline conversations with others about our budget process. So that will conclude my remarks.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Parker. Any questions for Mr. Parker? Commissioner Ellis?
Thanks, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Parker, for the report. I had sort of two thematic questions for you. The first, could you just sort of comment on reopening of the whole system, and sort of where we're at with that, and any sort of challenges that you anticipate associated with that?
So, one, we're fully budgeted to continue the level of service that we have been providing pre-COVID-19, so that's important. We have reestablished all of our 100-and-so bus routes. The frequency is not the same. We're trying to match the ridership and also make sure that we don't have overcrowding on our buses. You know, we're still in the middle of this pandemic, so we want to be very conscious of that. Our ridership is very, very slowly coming back, and, you know, at a rate that clearly businesses in the core of the region need to reopen to, for us to see us back to the pre-COVID-19 level. So restored the bus service, adding rail service to match the need, but ultimately, you know, have the funding, the funds to continue to provide service at the same levels we always have been.
And a second question for you. Could you comment on kind of your labor situation? And do you have adequate numbers of drivers, mechanics, you know, your critical workforce?
Yeah. So we did have a minor slowdown in hiring just in the midst of COVID-19. It was really difficult to train people, so we did slow down the hiring. We have, you know, we really restarted that in a meaningful way. You know, our hiring is pretty level right now, so we do have some vacancies, more so on the maintenance side, but nothing to a level that we can't manage ourselves through, and we're really trying to ramp up our hiring to make sure that we have sufficient resources.
Okay. And last question for you, maybe it has not been as magnified because of decreased service levels and so forth, but, or maybe it has, but just given the significant uptick in crime in some parts of the service area for MARTA services, could you just sort of comment on, you know, any emerging security issues and coordination of your police?
Yeah, you know, we focus on a lot, generally speaking. Overall, Part 1 crimes are down on MARTA, so we've had pretty, you know, not significantly down, fairly stable levels. One thing that we have done very recently is we have hired non-sworn police officers along with our police officers, so we do have more, you know, more people out in the system, not just sworn police officers. We call them protective specialists. So I think that program is working well, or also that group is also working with some homeless advocates, because, as we all know, homeless is homelessness, and unhoused continues to be a, you know, a challenge for the region. And, you know, we're trying to be a proactive, you know, participant in dealing with those issues. And so, you know, we manage crime really well. You know, I have a conversation with my chief of police every week going over the stats, and generally, it's flat.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right, Commissioner Hall?
Thank you for the presentation, even though it was short. Just a couple of things that constituents have questioned, the trash pickup, mostly on the northwest side of Atlanta, northwest of the Mercedes-Benz Stadium, in the Vine City, Washington Park area, where the MARTA bus coverings are, and along the outside of the MARTA station where the train station is, if there could be a little more attention paid to picking up trash.
Absolutely.
And then lighting, there was an email, and I have to acknowledge Colleen Kieranin, because she has made herself very accessible to responding to community issues concerning MARTA stations. But there was an email from a constituent from the northwest side about lighting as well.
Yeah, absolutely. We worked with the city of Atlanta. The reference to that email, when we looked into it, was really about lighting getting to the station as opposed to at the station. When I initially read it, it looked like it was about, you know, MARTA lighting on the platform or in the parking lots. So Colleen has worked directly with the ATL DOT to focus on, you know, improved street lighting, and there's been conversations around that.
Awesome. And you mentioned your security, MARTA security, and the homeless. What does the MARTA security do when they see someone that's homeless? Do they arrest them? Do they take them to APD or call APD? What's the process for handling the homeless?
Well, you know, two things. So one is, you know, really, our main focus around dealing with any individual rides to systems is making sure that we don't have fair evasion. So from a policing perspective, that is, that's a focus of theirs. What we have done is we have engaged Hope Atlanta, and we have three teams that are working with our non-sworn police officers. So there are three independent teams. A social worker teamed up with one of our MARTA employees, and actively engaging the homeless population, trying to make sure that they are aware of and facilitating, trying to find, you know, services for those individuals. And we continue, you know, continue to work on that. You know, our own police department really works in conjunction, but independently of APD. And, you know, in particular, we work closely with the airport. Late at night, as the airport has sort of changed some of their policies about homelessness, being allowed to stay in the airport, that's sort of, you know, impacted our late-night train service, and we're working with some social service agencies to make sure that we can, you know, in a humane way, find some services for those individuals who are on our trains.
Great. And has MARTA been part of the pre-arrest diversion initiative?
Yeah, we're working with, and I apologize, I don't know the name of the judge who runs the program offhand, but we are working to, with that Hope Atlanta program, to get more of the people who are unhoused into that program, who, you know, tend to be people who are continually, you know, not able to get services. And we see, you know, night after night on the train, making sure they're getting into that program, so it doesn't become a criminal offense. The last thing we want to do is, you know, have to enforce fair evasion that's really, you know, an issue of homelessness. So we're trying to work through that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioner Morris?
Good morning. I guess my question really is about the extent to which MARTA might be cranked in with the folks in Washington about the discussions about infrastructure funding, and the extent to which you all have priorities for earmarking.
Absolutely.
And my favorite, which is funding for the transit around the Belt Line. So if you could tell us just a little bit about where you think we might be on?
You know, a lot of activity, I've just seen the announcement that Secretary Buttigieg is coming to Atlanta on Friday, so there'll be an opportunity to interact with him there. Colleen, who was just referenced a moment ago, Colleen Kieranin and Melissa Molnix are actively engaged in earmarking, the earmarking program, you know, the requests that our congressional members are working on, and so we've been working with their staff. The larger piece that we're focused on, those are all important pieces, but the largest piece that we'll be able to tap into is our, the FTA CIG program, which includes new starts and small starts. You know, the MARTA system was built with significant investment with federal funds. This is the program that we will be tapping into to deliver our corridor programs. We're working with our, you know, our congressional delegation to make sure they know about our projects, they're supportive of them, and we have great support. And we will continue to, you know, to navigate that federal process to become eligible for those funding. So we've got a strong program. The Belt Line will be a recipient, you know, from my perspective, knock on wood, will be a recipient of those CIG funds to help build transit on the Belt Line, as are, you know, other projects that are important to all of us, like, you know, investments in South Fulton as well as North Fulton. So these are all important things that we're focused on. And I will shamelessly admit, I'm eager to get out of here as well, because we have a series of calls that are going on now with the congressional staffs and some of the congressmen that's supported through our trade organization, APTA, educating them about what's going on at MARTA right now. So our board chair is on those calls now, and as soon as I'm done, I'm going to join them.
Hopefully, we'll let you get out of here shortly.
Back to Commissioner Ellis.
Just one request. In the future reports, can you all include a slide on ridership?
Yes, absolutely. We'll get that to you in the meantime. We'll include that, you know, in our regular updates.
All right. Any further questions for Mr. Parker? All right, hearing none?
Thank you for your time.
All right, thank you, Mr. Parker. All right, one other housekeeping matter, colleagues. This one is time-sensitive and hour-sensitive. On page 5, item number 21-0367, this is the approval of the tan. The bids are in now, and we need to take that up right now. The bids are in, because there's a time problem with that. So I will move that, amend the agenda to take the tan up right now. They will get back to the public. Properly moved. Second, if those in favor say, "I oppose", no, it's approved. Thank you. Madam CFO, you have the floor?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm going to let Mr. Ashikawa advise the board of the bid that was received.
Good morning, commissioners. I'm happy to tell you that we received eight bids from eight different banks, the lowest being 0.07%, which is very, very low. And the bidder is JP Morgan, and it's going to be for $175 million and a premium amount of $1,225 million, a net interest cost of $75,347. So we request that you please approve it, so we can proceed with the tan.
Okay. A motion to approve by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Morris. Any questions? If not, cast your votes, please.
And the vote is open? And the motion passes unanimously.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Thank you, thank you, commissioners.
Mr. Carver?
Sir? Yes, sir. In addition to these 100 or so folks, we also have about five people that are on the Zoom, and I wanted some guidance from you on which should proceed first, the Zoom folks or the-
Let's take the Zoom, take the Zoom first.
Okay. We will switch over to them.
Okay.
Good morning, Commissioner. We have five speakers. The first will be Anthony Good morning, Commissioner. We have five speakers. The first will be Bentley Hudson. You're allowed to speak.
Thank you. Can you all hear me?
Yes.
All right, thank you. My name is Bentley Hudson. Including LGBTQ+, Indigenous, Immigrant, and Disabled Georgians. We envision a new Georgia where everyone in our state can freely and equitably participate in our democracy, where the power of these historically underrepresented communities is fully recognized and valued, where all Georgians can live with dignity and respect. Look, as of May 19, 2021, there is still a noted absence of a crisis center where people experiencing distressing mental effects can be treated rather than being incarcerated. We continue to arrest people in crisis when they couldn't have met with services that would help them. Not only does this expend limited financial resources, we suffer a great moral loss as a community when we choose to harm our neighbors, when we have the real choice of healing our neighbors. The Policing Alternative Division Initiative's existence itself shows the deep need for better investments in these services. However, instead of building out these services that would seek to address those in crisis and treat those experiencing behavioral health challenges, Chairman Pitts refused to even meet with Mayor Bottoms on how they could work together to utilize the space at ACDC together as a site of non-carceral restoration. Here's what our demands are. The New Georgia Project Action Fund expects that the Fulton County Commission will collaborate with the city of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing ARP resources and crisis services, behavioral health services, and other community needs. The Fulton County Commission can and should pay for these services through the American Rescue Plan, including the $20 million under consideration for a proposed behavioral health crisis center.
Your two minutes are up. Close, sum up, please. 15 more seconds.
We cannot use ACDC as a place for more jail beds. We must continue the work to support the conversion of ACDC into a Center for Equity and Wellness. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Next.
The next one is Micah Herskin. You are able to speak.
Speak up, Mr. Carver.
Hello, Commissioners. Good morning. My name is Micah Herskin, and I'm a public policy associate at the Southern Center for Human Rights, a member of the Closed Jail ATL Coalition, and a resident of District 4 of Fulton County. As many others have stated in the comments today in support of the American Rescue Plan to provide crucial services that are needed by the community, mental and behavioral health services.
Excuse me, sir. We can barely hear you. Where's, uh... Yeah, where is IT?
Mr. Chairman, we turned the volume up. We apologize.
Okay, continue, sir.
All right. I'm not sure exactly what you heard, but I am basically speaking today in support of...
All right, just a minute, just a minute. Again, so if it's Zoom, why can't we see who's speaking on the screen?
Due to the setup here, Mr. Chairman, on the Polycom, those who do not have their cameras on will not be visible. They're, they're in attendees mode. So what we see on the Zoom for the participants, we actually see, and on FGTV, they see, but in the...
I understand, I understand. We're learning. This is our second meeting. We're learning. Continue, sir.
All right. Well, what I really want to highlight is the opportunity to use the American Rescue Plan money to tackle the issue at hand with the Fulton County Jail. Just in case, in case you didn't hear before, my name is Micah Herskin. I'm a public policy associate at the Southern Center for Human Rights and a member of the Closed Jail ATL Coalition, as well as a resident of District 4 of Fulton County. And so as many of you probably know, the Fulton County Jail has been severely overcrowded, not just for the past year, but in fact for much of its existence over the past decades. And while some folks are claiming that Fulton County must acquire their Atlanta City Detention Center through sale or lease in order to resolve its overcrowding problem, the fact remains that Fulton County has all of the tools at its disposal to solve the problem itself. This includes not just backend solutions, such as releasing people through good time credit and compassionate release, and other means available to the sheriff and judges and district attorney, but also through front-end and preventative services, which Fulton County can take the opportunity to invest in with the American Rescue Plan dollars. One such service that would be incredibly crucial to include in the proposal is a behavioral health crisis center, which is an urgent need considering Fulton County's lack of crisis. It's my understanding that Chairman Pitts has rejected Mayor Keisha Bottoms' offer to meet about using the Atlanta City Detention Center to provide services such as a sobering center and other divergent opportunities, and instead has insisted that Fulton County lease a buy-in deal from Atlanta. We want to be really clear, this is not the way forward to a safer for Fulton County.
15 more, 15 more seconds, 15 more seconds.
After all that time that I lost?
No, we...
I mean, really, at the end of the day, we need to be proactive about addressing the jail population. We need to actively invest in things that will prevent harm, and especially need to invest in the behavioral health crisis center. We cannot incarcerate our way out of these issues. And instead, I really urge you all to pass the American Rescue Plan proposal and invest in services that people really need. Thank you.
Thank you. Next speaker.
Keith Strickler.
Hey, good morning. My name is Keith Strickler, and I am with Making the Transition, Making the Transition, the agency that does youth program, Fulton County Juvenile Court, create positive behavior intervention systems, custom systems of care. And I'm a, I'm a person who grew up in Fulton County myself. So first, I want to say thank you for all the work that you guys do and for your commitment to citizens of Fulton County. And I just wanted to echo what a lot of the other speakers said. I really feel like we can use our rescue fund in a very unique and creative way. I think that this is an opportunity for us to serve our youth in a way that we have never really had in Fulton County before. We can clearly see that crime is on the rise. We can see that our youth are... I mean, just the fact of looking at selling water on the corner of a third world country, we can clearly see that our youth need resources. And I believe that if we were able to create opportunities to reach our youth and empower youth, train our youth, and get them critical programming and access to resources, we can lower the violence, we can lower the crime rate, increase the quality of life of citizens all across the county. I myself went through Fulton County Juvenile Court. I served time in the Fulton County, the Fulton County Adult Facility. And growing up in Fulton County, people weren't looking to us as an opportunity to feed the highest risk population. And I think that this could be a time where we could really curb violence through early intervention and be able to create a better county for all citizens of Fulton County. And I would really just like to encourage you to just look at these opportunities and just look at ways that we can serve our youth, because we have a level of improvement that we can't fulfill or we can't reach because we just don't have resources to define what we do. I don't want to take up more time than you there. I feel like I don't want to keep going on things that you already have a passion for. I just want to make sure we want all these opportunities.
All right, 15 more seconds.
Like I said, I don't need any more. I really appreciate what you're doing, and I just encourage you to just, you know, impact our youth in some great ways.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Next speaker.
Next speaker is Tiffany Roberts.
Good morning. My name is Tiffany Roberts, and I'm Community Engagement and Movement Building Council for the Southern Center for Human Rights. I also live in 30331, and I was a Ben Hill Tiger, so I really love this city and love this community. And I'm calling in support of the use of the American Rescue Plan funds, in part, to contribute to work that the county can do to reduce interaction with the criminal legal system for many of our residents. You all know just as well as I do that since the jail was built in 1989, there were four lawsuits before the 2004 lawsuit because of overcrowding. When I was a public defender in Fulton County, I visited my clients as far as Hall County and Milton because of overcrowding. And then we got Union City, right? And so now we're talking about acquiring ACDC as the only solution, when we should see that that solution that Fulton County has so often sought has been wholly ineffective, and instead has driven mass incarceration. When Judge Schube ended the federal oversight over the Fulton County Jail, it was after a long time of being disappointed at the progress that the county failed to make. And when COVID hit, Southern Center and others have been working to try to assist the county with depopulating the jail. Like, so until, as early as 2019, we were working. And when COVID hit, the Bell Project, Women on the Rise, Southern Center, service providers, and even Ebenezer Baptist Church, where I am, Social Justice Chair, tried to work to help you depopulate the jail. And what we ran into was obstruction. When the Public Defender's Office filed their habeas purpose petition on behalf of hundreds of clients, they were met with vehement opposition from the county. And so I'm saying this all to say that you have had multiple opportunities to depopulate the jail and to address this issue, and yet God has presented you with yet another opportunity to use the funds in the American Rescue Plan to provide other services that would curb interaction with the criminal legal system.
15 seconds.
If there are 800 people, I hear you, Chairman, if there are 800 people in the Fulton County Jail who are currently on psychochoic meds, we should know that we should be using this money to address the root causes of some of this behavior. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Next speaker, one more.
The next speaker is Tanisha Nunley.
Hi, can you...
Yes.
Oh, wonderful. Hi, I'm Tanisha Nunley. I am a resident of Fulton County in the City of Atlanta, unincorporated in Fulton County. And I'm a teacher, and I'm a former teacher in a public school. And I firsthand see how our mission of services need to be improved. And I want to complicate, as a teacher and resident of the City of Atlanta in Fulton County, for our ARP dollars dedicated to expanding educational programming for our students and making sure that we are able to defer from giving out our agency and criminal justice, being engaged in the justice system. I also want to express deep need of services and support for our students and young people, especially our opportunities to have no options beyond either school, or when they're trying to enter, interact or be included into the workforce. We desperately need this support. As a teacher, I'm struggling to support kids and their mental health after this pandemic. I do not want to make other decisions to invest more in programs that incarcerate our children and young people than rehabilitate and support their mental wellness. I see firsthand in classroom how mental wellness actually expands itself into the criminal justice system, and instead of them getting help, they get jailed, they get arrested, they get in more trouble. And we are not doing them a favor by putting them in jail. That's not solving our problem. So I'm encouraging the board of the county to use these funds for our young people to help everybody else is seeing the problem as a mental health issue, not a punitive criminal justice issue. So I encourage you, from a teacher's point, please love on our young people, support funding, programming that provides more services like Christmas.
15 seconds.
Thank you, Chairman. Please make sure, I'm encouraging you, please, 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 to invest these dollars in programs that support and rehabilitate our children's mental wellness and not punish them harder. Thank you.
Okay, we have one last speaker. This is Ben Howard. Mr. Howard?
Greetings, Commissioners and staff. Special greetings to you citizens and voters of Fulton County who are watching and are listening to the county government in action. Ben Howard, senior advocate, public policy analyst. Two things. First, a question. Do our Fulton County Boards and Commissions satisfy Georgia's Sunshine laws when they place notices of their meetings on their organizational websites and nowhere else? Secondly, we are not Maricopa County. The big lies should have no resting place here. Liking beneath the blatant charge of someone trying to buy someone else's vote is this obliminal supposition that the people standing in precinct lines are so devoid of character that they are willing to trade their precious vote from water to quench their thirst. Not so. They stood in line in the sun too long. They have stood in the rain too frequently. They have stood on tired feet too often to be denigrated by any notion that their vote, their vote can be bought with a bottle of Acupina, Desani, Merier, or Pellegrino. So man up, woman up, members of the Fulton County Board of Registration and Elections, speak out and let the world know bottled water is not Fulton County's Achilles' heel. If it be true that no lie lives forever, let the big lie lie crushed here in Fulton County now.
Thank you, Mr. Howard. Is that it? Is that it?
Yes, sir.
Okay, now back to the written comments.
Yes, sir. We have, the first one is from Mary Quarterman of Roswell. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is, he is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Next one is Carrie Hines of Roswell. As a taxpaying citizen in this county, I highly disagree with renewing our contract with Happy Faces Personnel. They have not proven themselves to be a nonpartisan company and therefore should not have anything to do with our elections. I also disagree with extending Mr. Wan's term as Chairman of Elections. With all the issues in the last two elections, it's time for new management. Finally, Richard Barron was fired as election, fired by the Elections Board months ago. It is time to honor their decision. If we are ever to trust the election process again, it's imperative that we move, that we remove anyone that was involved with these past elections. Public comment from Lisa Muzzi of Johns Creek. I do not approve of extending Alec Wan's reappointment. He is strongly partisan Democrat, and I do not approve of this representation. We also must honor the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron. We, the people of Fulton County, are actively engaged and want to be represented fairly and properly. Fulton County needs to be cleaned up. Public comment by Jeff Lampel of Duluth. As a longtime Fulton County resident, I am opposed to the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated and their involvement in our elections. This temporary agency has proven to be excessively partisan and was not transparent in our most recent elections. I am also opposed to the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. His actions have been highly partisan and should not be in this role. Finally, I fully support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Thank you. Public comment by Jim Nelson. Please oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which is, which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Lisa McGee of Atlanta. Hi, my name is Lisa McGee, and I live in District 5 of Fulton County. As a resident, I want you to know that I expect the county to collaborate with the city of Atlanta to reduce, reduce the jail population through investing in the community. We need other options in our community in order to reduce the number of people in jail, such as crisis services, behavioral health services, housing, and other community needs. Our community is desperate for service that uplifts the residents, and closing the jail to bring, to bring away for other things is of vital importance. Public comment from Lisa Casper. Good morning. I strongly oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency whose alleged actions and connections with the 2020 presidential elections raised enough concern to warrant a complete investigation, including the request for a thorough audit, which remains necessary, which has also proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Attention to these matters are of the utmost importance. Public comment by Lee Hills of Roswell. I oppose in every way the approval of the statewide I oppose in every way the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. Additionally, I oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. Finally, I support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Fulton County Director of Elections. Public comment by Dina Provenzo of Roswell. I strongly oppose the statewide, the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. Finally, I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Denise Devine of Roswell. I heavily oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in recent elections. The video of them hiding suitcases under tables and counting ballots multiple times is considered fraud. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I'm in favor of the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. He continues to put our votes at risk, cannot handle the vote count process, and I have zero confidence in our elections. Public comment by Timothy Cook. Good morning. I am commenting today to urge the Board of Commissioners to use your vote today to direct American Rescue Plan funds to behavioral health services, housing, and many other critical resources that our communities need. We have an opportunity today to establish critical resources for the county that help our families and residents in crisis and reduce our reliance on criminal justice in the county jail. Please establish the urgently needed Behavioral Health Crisis Center and follow the City of Atlanta's lead in providing the needs of our most vulnerable residents with dignity and respect. Thank you. Public comment by Marcel Cabato. The Fulton County Jail needs to be depopulated, not expanded. Rescue funds should be used to restore communities, not punish them. We are still in a pandemic which makes jail conditions even more inhumane and needlessly cruel. Ripping communities apart doesn't make anyone safer, it just makes them more desperate and afraid. Public comment by Molly Reed of Milton. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decisions to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Bridget Thorn of Alpharetta. Dear Commissioners, according to the Carter Jones Auditor's Report, Fulton County has leaned very heavily upon an army of temporary workers fulfilled the litany of tasks that must be completed from logistics to processing ballots to scanning final results. It would perhaps be best to offset this number of workers with stakeholders from the community who would like to get involved in the electoral process. By conducting multiple interviews with temporary staff, it has made clear that some have no keen interest in participating in this immensely important process, which is perhaps to blame for some of the sloppy clerical errors and logistical shortcomings that have played the complicated electoral process. Based on my experience, I could not agree more. So it saddens me that Fulton County Elections doesn't seem to want to fix this problem. For six years, Fulton County Elections has relied on Happy Faces staffing. By now, these millions of our tax dollars should be spent on a Fulton County Elections/ Hiring Training Department that would first reach out to existing community poll workers to fill these positions. Out-of-county and out-of-state Happy Faces employees should not be the majority handling our ballots, interacting with voters, testing and setting up equipment, and scanning our results. The majority of election workers should be stakeholders in our community. I urge you not to follow Fulton County Elections to lazily renew this contract. Instead, challenge them to use our tax dollars to invest in a department within Fulton County Elections that specializes in the hiring and training of community workers. This would benefit the overall running of our elections and help restore trust in the elections process. If this can't be done, I urge you to support the BRE's decision to terminate Elections Director Richard Barron. Public comment by Beverly Pendergrass of Marietta. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Lynn Garwood of Atlanta. I vehemently oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. Additionally, I support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Mary Krieger of Alpharetta. Please immediately note my concerns and request for the following items. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated to continue running our elections. This agency has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in recent elections. How can you or our citizens possibly ever trust them again? Please do not approve their contract. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. How can you possibly trust the work provided by this partisan leadership? It's simply unfair to ask citizens to submit to any partisanship in this leadership role. I am in favor of the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. He's proved not worthy of this role and needs to be removed from the position. Thank you for listening. I hope you will act in favor of my request. Public comment by Melissa Word of Atlanta. Hi, my name is Melissa Word and I live in District Five of Fulton County. As a resident, I want you to know that I feel it is important to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in the community. We need other options in our community in order to reduce the number of people in jail, such as crisis services, behavioral health services, housing, and other community needs. Overcrowded prisons, people doesn't make for a desirable place to live and thrive. Our city should be a reflection of better, more inventive, and holistic ways to care for all people, including those who move through the justice system. Let's invest in our communities by reducing incarceration and increasing services that actually support people. Public comment by Karen Shalaka of Alpharetta. To whom it may concern, I strongly oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. Happy Faces as a temporary agency have shown themselves to be extremely partisan and not transparent in recent elections. I also strongly oppose reappointing Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is utterly and completely partisan, and as such, should not remain in this important role. I am in total support of Elections Board's decision to end Richard Barron's term as Fulton County Elections Director. Bravo. Public comment, Roberta Myers-Douglas of Stockbridge. I am Roberta Myers-Douglas, Director of State Strategy and Reentry at the Legal Action Center, a nonprofit law and policy organization that uses legal and policy strategies to fight discrimination, build health equity, and restore opportunity for people with criminal records, substance abuse disorders, HIV, and AIDS. We are a member of the Alliance for the Communities Over Cages Close the ATL Jail Campaign, a coalition of over fifty local and regional organizations dedicated to closing, raising, and replacing the Atlanta City Detention Center with the Center for Wellness, Equity, and Freedom. We firmly oppose any effort to use the suffering in Fulton County to justify jail expansion, particularly to justify reopening the mostly empty Atlanta Detention Center. While I do not reside in Fulton County, everything that happens here affects me and my family. Despite being warned repeatedly by advocates that we would end up in the overcrowding crisis that we have witnessed for years in the Fulton County Jail, county leaders have not effectively stopped the flow of people entering the legal system or reduced the number of people populating the jail. The county has to be committed to increasing the availability of interventions that lead to people getting the care and support they need to change their behaviors and circumstances. There must be an investment in strategies to reduce the reliance on incarceration, as well as programs that support successful reentry of individuals leaving jail or prison back into the community. You can start today by voting to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population by investing in crisis services, behavioral health, and other community needs, and use funds from the American Rescue Plan to create a Behavioral Health Crisis Center that the county desperately needs. The Alliance has provided the Board of Commissioners several additional recommendations for reducing the jail population in our letter sent by email on May 12th. We hope that you will heed and take action. Public comment by Sarah Pedro of Milton. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This temporary agency should not be allowed anywhere near our elections in this state. They are unskilled, untrained, and do not take this very sacred right to vote seriously. The illegal acts they engaged in during the 2020 elections should not be spread to the rest of the state. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Elections. This decision should be upheld since the board that terminated him was the board he reported to. Public comment by Karen Thompson of Atlanta. Hi, my name is Karen Thompson and I live in District Two of Fulton County. As a resident, I want you to know that I expect the county to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in the community. We need other options in our community in order to reduce the number of people in jail, such as crisis services, behavioral health services, housing, and other community needs. Public comment by Amy Up Hughes of Alpharetta. Our elections should be run by our local community volunteers, not a paid temporary agency. That is the way it was done previously. Public comment by Darby Gwen. Hello, I live and work in Fulton County. As a member of this community, I implore you to consider using the funds discussed today to bring about community building instead of to law enforcement. We have a serious problem as a society if policing people is our go-to in time of crisis. Please consider dedicating these funds to crisis services, housing for the homeless that isn't a cage, and behavioral health services. These funds should be used to help people, and you can make a serious change by supporting people in need. Atlanta needs you. Please answer the call with kindness and aid. Public comment by Alice Jiang of Atlanta. Hello, my name is Dr. Jiang, and I live in Fulton County and work in Fulton County at Grady Hospital. It is my hope that the board invests in vital crisis and behavioral health services that are lacking in the community. We have an overwhelming shortage of available and easily accessible resources, and a Behavioral Health Crisis Center should absolutely be one of the funded initiatives with the American Rescue Dollars. This will allow for much improved linkage to care and treatment, keeping patients in our community, saving the county money in the long run, and aiding in lowering the number of admissions to the Fulton County Jail due to untreated mental health disorders. Public comment by Kyle Torres of Atlanta. Hello, my name is Dr. Kyle Torres, and I work in Fulton County at Grady Hospital. It is my hope that the board invests in vital crisis and behavioral health services that are lacking in the community. We have an overwhelming shortage of available and easily accessible resources, and a Behavioral Health Crisis Center should absolutely be one of the funded initiatives with the American Rescue Dollars. This will allow for much improved linkage to care and treatment, keeping our patients in the community, saving the county money in the long run, and aiding in lowering the number of admissions to the Fulton County Jail due to untreated mental health disorders. Public comment by Lori Randall of Roswell. Thank you all for your service to the people of Fulton County. I support the RIP to get help to Fulton County residents now. We can't afford to wait longer with how much people have suffered during the pandemic. I also support the Commission retaining, hiring, and firing authority over the Fulton Elections Board to maintain integrity and accountability in our elections. Public comment by Kaia Haid. My name is Kaia Haid. I live in District Five. I am writing because I know the Board of Commissioners will be discussing and voting on what to do with millions of dollars in federal funding at Wednesday's meeting. I urge the board to use this money to alleviate the overcrowding at the county jail and create real public safety by funding health services, job programs, housing programs, and other services that keep our community safe. I don't want to see a single dollar go to expanding policing in Fulton County. We've seen that bloated policing budgets have done nothing to actually help people during the pandemic. Please do the right thing and use this relief money to help people in our county get their basic needs met and contribute to real public safety. Public comment by Sissy Lang. The East Point Farmers Market Committee believes that our market is helping to bridge gaps in our community concerning public health, as well as equity issues. Food deserts have been linked to higher instances of diet-related diseases, such as diabetes and obesity. The East Point and Tri-City area unfortunately continue to experience food deserts. Our Wholesome Wave Georgia partnership has allowed so many to increase their access to fresh locally grown fruits, vegetables, and plants. Over the years, the market in partnership with Wholesome Wave Georgia has offered educational opportunities to help our community with some of the stated public health concerns. The market has also had the opportunity to offer the Doubling Program to seniors using senior WIC. The expansion to our older community not only helped feed these seniors, but has built strong relationships between the East Point Farmers Market and senior community centers and organizations in our Tri-City area, of which the market continues to cultivate programming. The market truly supports the mission that is being sought to provide fresh and healthy, affordable options for SNAP users. We have witnessed firsthand for over ten years that our partnership with the Wholesome Wave Georgia's Doubling Program assists and offers local fresh produce options. The ability to offer this program has assisted the East Point Farmers Market in building stronger relationships with our community regarding market patrons who use the Doubling Program, individuals and professional entities who seek to assist those in need in the community, and has also helped create connections on multiple levels that strengthen the reach of the market to the community. In short, the East Point Farmers Market has greatly appreciated and continues to benefit from our partnership with Wholesome Wave Georgia. We believe the market would not have been successful without this Doubling Program. We truly honor and appreciate the work that the Wholesome Wave Georgia seeks to accomplish, and we will be there to help by whatever means we are able. Public comment by Kerry Smith of Johns Creek. Good morning Commissioners. My name is Kerry Smith, and I live in Johns Creek District One. I was disappointed to find out there would
Hi, T, where are you? No, no, that's what we wanted, that's what we wanted to do.
My apologies, we had a battery problem with the microphone.
All right, we're on twenty-nine, continue.
I'll resume. Public comment by Allison Messenger of Atlanta. Hi, my name is Allison, and I live in District Three of Fulton County. As a resident, I want you to know that I expect the county to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in the community. We need other options in our community in order to reduce the number of people in jail, such as
Mr. Carver, Mr. Carver, go back to number twenty-nine. You didn't finish that one. That was Kerry Smith of Johns Creek. Start that one, start over.
Kerry Smith? Yes, sir. I'll restart then, sorry about that. Good morning Commissioners. My name is Kerry Smith, and I live in Johns Creek District One. I was disappointed to find out there would not be a vote on Commissioner Arrington's resolution at this meeting. I am hoping this will be voted on soon, and you will vote yes to Commissioner Arrington's resolution. The Commission needs to retain the authority on hiring and firing of the election staff. I also wanted to take a moment to ask you to vote yes and move forward with implementing the priorities of the American Rescue Plan. To my understanding, this was voted on and approved in March, and that during the May seventh meeting, no objections were voiced by the mayor. So it seems that all the Ts have been crossed and Is dotted. Do what needs to be done and vote yes. Now, public comment by Allison Messenger of Atlanta. Hi, my name is Allison, and I live in District Three of Fulton County. As a resident, I want you to know that I expect the county to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in the community. We need other options in our community in order to reduce the number of people in jail, such as crisis services, behavioral health services, housing, and other community needs. The time has come to address our community's safety and health needs through investment in services, not increased incarceration. The people of Fulton County and the City of Atlanta demand this change for our community. We need you to listen to our voices. Thank you for your time. Public comment by Betty Bernard of Atlanta. Hi, my name is Betty, and I live in District Five of Fulton County. As a resident, I want you to know that I expect the county to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in the community. We need other options in our community in order to reduce the number of people in jail, such as crisis services, behavioral health services, housing, and other community needs. Public comment by Mark Spencer. Hello, my name is Dr. Spencer, and I live in District Four in Fulton County and work in Fulton County at Grady Hospital. It is my hope that the board invests in vital crisis and behavioral health services that are lacking in the community. We have an We have an overwhelming source, shortage of quickly available, affordable, and easily accessible resources, and a behavioral health crisis center would absolutely be one of the funded initiatives, should absolutely be one of the funded initiatives with these American Rescue Dollars. This will allow for much improved linkage to care and treatment, keeping patients in the community, saving the county money in the long run, and aiding in lowering the number of admissions to the Fulton County Jail due to untreated mental health disorders. Public comment by Levette Carbo Thompson. As the lead organizer of the Black Alliance for Just Immigration and advocate for racial, social, and economic justice, I am reaching out to this Fulton County B O Cs to speak about the American Rescue Dollars, how the American Rescue Dollars can best be spent on behavioral health services, housing, and other critical resources that our communities need. We expect the Fulton County B O Cs to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in crisis services, behavioral health services, other community needs, and they can and should pay for it through American Rescue Plan, including the $20 million under consideration for a proposed behavioral health crisis center. Fulton County has no crisis services. We need other options to reduce the number of people in jail. We owe it to our community members to utilize funds from the American Rescue Plan to create a transformative, people-centered approach to addressing inequalities and enhancing the kinds of services and supports that help prevent people from getting tangled up in criminal justice system in the first place. Public comment by Denise Rubin of Atlanta. Hi, my name is Denise Rubin and I'm an organizer with the Women on the Rise Georgia. Tell the Board of Commissioners that we expect them to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in crisis services, behavioral health services, and other community needs, and they can and should pay for it through the American Rescue Plan, including the $20 million under consideration for a proposed behavioral health crisis center. Fulton County has no crisis services. We need other options to reduce the number of people in jail. Public comment by Alan Callan. Hi, my name is Alan Callan and I live in District Four in Fulton County. As a resident, I want you to know that I expect the county to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in the community. We need other options in our community in order to reduce the number of people in jail, such as crisis services, behavioral health services, housing, and other community needs. I hope that this is considered in the meeting on May 19th discussing these topics. Public comment by Andy Friedberg. As a farmer in Fulton County, serving our neighbors in the southwest neighborhoods of Oakland Park, Edair Park, Capital View, and Sylvan Hills, the SNAP program has proved a growing benefit to our customers and to our business. Utilizing the Fresh for Less program through Wholesome Wave Georgia, our SNAP customers are able to double their purchasing power at Farm Stand, easing the burden of choosing healthy versus cheap food. We've seen an increase in customers using SNAP dollars and the amount they spend with us since we started accepting and doubling EBT four to five years ago. Because our produce count becomes more available with SNAP benefits, we also benefit from having more new customers helping to, helping to our farm in business so we can pay living wages to our employees and continue to grow and healthily, healthily produce for our community. Public comment by DeFrida Howard of Atlanta. First, I want to thank the Commissioners for including food insecurity in the ARPA budget. I want to share the positive impact SNAP healthy initiatives have had on my life. I have been doubling my SNAP benefits at East Point Farmers Market in Good Samaritan for the last three years, and I have lowered my blood pressure so significantly I no longer need to take medicine. I really enjoy my weekly trips to the market and have made many connections and friends at the farmers market. I am very excited that there may soon be more opportunity for families like mine to double their benefits across Fulton County. Thank you. Public comment by Christie McCrayne of Roswell. First, let me say again that I support the full, the Elections Board and their decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Fulton County's elections was a national disgrace, and as head of the board, it was his responsibility to ensure that the election was above reproach. He failed. Furthermore, the contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group should not be approved. Fulton County needs to clean house of all entities who were responsible for election integrity as they failed in their mission. The Faces of Fulton County are not happy with this group and, and should never be rehired by the county. Lori Carbone of Johns Creek. Local people should, should be working our elections. I do not want anyone outside my area working the polls. Do not use Happy Faces. Local people will ensure election integrity. Next is Alice Goldberg of Johns Creek. My name is Alice Goldberg. I'm a resident of Fulton County. I support the implementation plan you will consider today to ensure those who need our help the most will get it. Home mortgage assistance will keep families in their homes. Grants for small businesses will help to keep people employed and shops open. Also, our young people need summer jobs. Please vote, please vote yes on the implementation of the American Rescue Plan dollars today. Thank you. Public comment by Dawn Whaley of Atlanta. As a board member of the American Heart Association, organization fighting for longer, healthier lives, I applaud you, our Fulton County Commissioners, including funding to address food insecurity. As an advocate for heart health, I'm asking for the consideration of a SNAP healthy incentive program to be part of this. SNAP healthy incentives increase access to fresh produce, support heart health, and research shows they also spur economic activity. Thank you for supporting the health of our community members in need of ARPA funds. Public comment by Joe McCrina. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Jill Wright of Milton. Good morning Commissioners. I oppose the approval of a statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group as they are highly partisan and were not transparent in recent state elections. Partisan and shouldn't be in this role. If the fate of Richard Barron as Elections Director is determined at this meeting today, I support the Elections Board decision to terminate him. He has mismanaged the most recent elections, creating a nationwide cloud of doubt for our county and state, and he has not been transparent with his Elections Board and strategic plan this year. Thank you. Public comment by Kimberly Wright of Atlanta. As the Executive Director of the American Heart Association, an organization fighting for longer, healthier lives, I applaud you, our Fulton County Commissioners, funding and including funding to address food insecurity. As an advocate for heart health, I'm asking for the consideration of a SNAP healthy incentive program to be part of this. SNAP healthy incentives increase access to fresh produce, support heart health, and research shows they also spur economic activity. Thank you for supporting the health of our community members in need through ARPA funds. Public comment by Lauren Blausser. We do not want to outsource any poll workers, in particular Happy Face employees. We prefer to hire county citizens as poll workers. I support the Election Board's decision to fire Richard Barron. I do not want to reappoint Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board as he is partisan, having ran as a Democrat for a House seat. Public comment by Mark Wright of Milton. We do not want to outsource any poll workers in petition, in particularly Happy, Happy Faces employees. We prefer to hire county citizens as poll workers. We support the Election Board decision to fire Richard Barron. We do not want to reappoint Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board as he is partisan, having ran as a Democrat for a House seat. Public comment by Leonard Bryant of College Park. I vote yes to support item 21-0378, R I P. We are in dire need of emergency help. Public comment by Yvonne Barber of Union City. When will Fulton County rebuild my house? I am a senior citizen, have been on housing rehab waitlist for 13 years. Signed, Yvonne Barber, homeowner. Public comment by Paul Provenzo. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Michelle Webb of Roswell. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Sharon Fowler of Atlanta. The Happy Faces Personnel Group should absolutely not be given a statewide contract to run our elections. They have proven to be far too partisan and not transparent. Additionally, I oppose Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board for the same reason, too partisan. Furthermore, given that the Board of Elections Commission is a bipartisan group that voted to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections, that this, that decision should absolutely stand. Public comment by Monica of Alpharetta. This has got to stop. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. We ask, all we ask for is transparency in elections. Hiring the same group does not provide it. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Thank you for the opportunity to share my views. Please take this into account as I speak for most of my county. Public comment by Thomas Amoroso of Noonan. I oppose Happy Faces, which is a partisan group to oversee elections. Public comment by Shelby Spring Bowes. Good morning Fulton County Commissioners. My name is Shelby Springer Bowes, and I am a Fulton County resident. I read through your agenda for today's meeting and was disturbed at the, by the items that you are considering. So disturbed that I got up early before work to send you these comments. First of all, it's public knowledge that Mark Zuckerberg gave Fulton County a $6 million grant based on if you hired minority-only staffing companies to run our elections. Talk about dividing people by race. Today, you're considering continuing the contract for the same group, Happy Faces. Many of the Happy Faces employees don't live in our county and have no interest in the success of our fair election. You need to stick with people who are trained volunteers who live in our county and stand for the interests of our elections. I'm asking you today to not approve the, approve, approve the contract continuing with Happy Faces. Secondly, we see that Chairman Pitts wants to reappoint Alex Wan as Chair of the Board of Elections. I do not, do not extend his appointment beyond June 23. He is highly partisan and should not be placed in this role. I ask for you not to extend Alex Wan as Chair of the Board of Elections. Thirdly, I want to address Richard Barron, Director of Fulton County Elections. As you know, Richard Barron was voted out twice by the Fulton County Elections Board. You decided to overrule their decision. Why in the world does Fulton County Election Board exist if you, as Fulton County Commissioners, just get to do whatever you please? I am asking you to honor the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron today. Just so you know and remember, you do not exist in a bubble. As Commissioners, you were elected and placed there to represent our citizens and uphold truth and justice. There have been many people watching online today and many more will be reading about this later. The entire county is watching Fulton, the entire country is watching Fulton County. What an embarrassment. Please do the right thing. Make me proud to be a Fulton County citizen. Again, we are watching. Public comment by Sue Lica Savage of Alpharetta. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also approve the reappointment, I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Karen Hogan of Johns Creek. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Katie Hudson of Roswell. Surely you will not allow the temp agency Happy Faces that you used in the last election to continue. They used some very shady tactics and their faces were anything but happy. A friend of mine went with their college daughter to the Milton Library for early voting and pointed at her daughter's college sweatshirt and rolled their eyes at each other. I'm sure that they, they made sure the votes didn't count. It was very unprofessional. We have heard that there are many missing votes from that location. The public is paying attention now, so you better do the right thing. Public comment by Elizabeth Vertiber. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency that has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is a, he is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I do support the Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. As civil servants, I ask each of you to represent the values of your constituents and ensure Fulton County has fair, honest, and transparent election processes. Public comment by Brad Grossman. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in the role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Laura McMinkle of Roswell. I do not approve of renewing the contract with Happy Faces. Public comment by Marika Lamaro of Atlanta. My name is Marika Lamaro and I live in Fourth District of Fulton County, the Garden District of Midtown. I want to let you know that it's important to, to me to reduce the number of people in jail. I do not believe the jails keep us safe. I believe that investing in the community and improving the quality of life for everyone is ultimately what makes our communities healthier and safer. I want our county, city, and city to invest in community support like crisis services, behavioral health, and housing. I want Fulton County and the City of Atlanta to collaborate and reduce the number of people in jail by investing in the community. Use American Rescue Funds to invest in these community resources to uplift our community and make Atlanta a beacon of the South. Public comment by Melissa Brown of Roswell. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Yami Richardson of Johns Creek. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Zach Hines of Roswell. I am, I am a, I am a considered citizen and want you to know that I oppose the approval of the contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. In the most recent elections, this temp agency lacked transparency and appears to be highly partisan. In addition, I support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Lastly, I oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is, he too is highly partisan and not fit for that role. Public comment by Paula, by Pamela Weatherby of Roswell. Fulton County Board of Commissioners, my husband and I strongly oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. We also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. We also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Robin Michaels of Sandy Springs. I oppose the, I oppose extending the contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group. The Stacey Abrams-backed group were highly partisan, leaning left, and were not nearly, and were not transparent during the 20 and 21 elections. I watched the video from State Farm Arena and Horror as their employees worked with an election official to blatantly commit fraud. I realized this is the only way that Democrats in Georgia can win, by cheating. We know that Georgia and most of the county are red. There, there are only blue cities, no blue states. We have, we have plenty of nonpartisan citizens in the state of Georgia to work to honestly count ballots. I oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I do support the termination of Richard Barron as Director of Elections. Let's face it, we want change, we want honesty. That is not the current climate in Georgia and things just change. Public comment by Ted Mikrochik of Roswell. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent election. Shame on you guys. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is extremely partisan and should not be in this role. This is unfair and prejudicial. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Lila Givens of Alpharetta. I grew up in Sandy Springs and Alpharetta and currently work with the Fulton County Schools. My mother still resides at the address above. I think it's critical for I think it's critical for the Board of Commissioners to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in crisis services, behavioral health services, and other community needs. You can and should pay for it through the American Rescue Plan, including $20 million for a proposed behavioral health crisis center. Fulton County has no crisis services. We need options other than the jail to reduce the number of people in jail. There is abundant evidence that jails do not increase safety in our communities. Resources and crisis services like those that could be available through the American Rescue Plan do. Public comment by Paul Romano of Johns Creek. I oppose the, the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Wesley Hills. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the recent elections. I also appro, oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Betty Corwell of Marietta. Please do not reward Happy Faces any contract because they were partisan players in the November 3rd election and may have committed fraud. There has to be other worthy contractors that are more trustworthy. Public comment by Lisa Recatell of Alpharetta. I would like to go on record as being opposed to the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Thank you for your time. Public comment by Tamara Harris of Atlanta. The well-being of Fulton County communities first begins with the families and households. Across the United States, many families and households have been torn apart financially, emotionally, and physically by the impact of the incarceration system. Individuals who need mental health support have been unjustly imprisoned. I stand with the many community members who would like to see American Rescue Funds directed toward programs and services to, that will decrease incarceration, meet mental health needs, and therefore keep our families intact. American Rescue Funds should be directed toward the development of behavioral health crisis centers and programs that set the mental health needs of our community members as top priorities. Public comment by Donna Renfro Lawson. I, Donna Renfro Lawson, are, am the bearer of serious, safety-laden, and concerning news in relationship to our public libraries, patrons, and staff. The Chair of the Board of Trustees for the Fulton County Library System has published that a notice does not need to have to be provided to patrons that are expelled or expend, or are suspended from the public library. How does one embrace this fact? Why do you, as elected officials, support such categorically wrong library management? What, I'm, I'm sorry, Mr. Chip Joyner, the Board Chair, certainly familiar with the, my concerns of the awful library management on a personal level. He has expressed his lack of knowledge in many ways. His issues are still unresolved. For him to believe and publish such a statement, which is against responsible people's safety care, is just one clarion call that our libraries have lost focus on our missions as writ, as written by the, as written by Fulton County. Whose responsibility is it in this COVID-19 season with modern, modernized library service plans to implement a long-term and short-term strategic model? Obviously, the current Executive Director, Gail Hunter-Holloman, cannot or will not. Gail Hunter-Holloman and Dr. Pamela Rochelle have implied unresolved agendas that cause major divisions in leadership. They will both need help getting out the door when people, safe, when people's safety matters are this risky. Can you imagine the amount of bad tension, paranoia, legal considerations, and mischievous activities among patrons and staff when employees have been given the right to suspend or expel patrons without notice? Don't you comprehend the problems? There is an immediate need for a library town hall meeting. Public comment by Cynthia Qualtire of Alpharetta. Please do not bring in outside contractors to manage our fragile elections. The high number of complaints and lawsuits should be enough to no longer use Happy Faces or keep Richard Barron as Director. We must, we must have change in order to provide the citizens of Fulton County a fair and nonpartisan election process. I have my vote taken from me, and even just one taken vote should be enough to convince the Commission that there are serious problems with the message, methods used to manage the elections process in Fulton County. You are the elected officials to represent the citizens of this county, and I urge each of you to listen to the number of constituents speaking today, asking for integrity to be brought back to our elections process in Fulton County. Public comment by Heather Clatt. I do not approve of the suggested and requested statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections again. It was a complete mess last time that resulted in nothing short of election uncertainty. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. We should not have a partisan chairperson in any role. I do support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as the Director. Cleaning out the mistakes is the only way we can start and rebuild and move on with any certainty in our state. Thank you very much. Public comment by Kirk Sarkisian of Johns Creek. The recent election cycle has exposed Georgia, and particularly Fulton County, as the epicenter of either gross ineptness or worse, blatant corruption. The decisions you make today will demonstrate your commitment to putting integrity first, as it always should be for our sacred elections. This is your legacy. For this reason, I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency based in Maryland which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board, who is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Do the right thing. Public comment, Robin Auerbach of Roswell. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director in Fulton County. Public comment by Thomas Bows. Good morning Commissioners. Your agenda holds three items this morning. Approving the contract for Happy Faces Personnel Group to work Fulton County elections. Happy Faces is the group that supplied workers in 2020 when the trained workers were sent home due to a COVID, due to an alleged COVID outbreak. NPR did a story on one of those workers who stated quite clearly that she was not trained, not prepared, and had to figure it out for herself. And this is the group you want to hire again. Add to that the fact that Happy Faces is a minority-only temp agency. Please tell me how that is not discriminatory. We need trained workers from Fulton County who have a stake in ensuring a free and fair election, not untrained minority-only workers from random counties and even out of state. You must not approve this contract with Happy Faces Personnel. Items two and three on your agenda should both be rejected as well. Alex Wan is a left-wing partisan who will lead the Fulton County Board of Elections into further chaos. Do not approve his appointment. The Board of Elections needs fair and unbiased leadership. Richard Barron brought disgrace and embarrassment to Fulton County in 2020 with his abysmal job performance and his firing of whistleblowers who exposed his incompetence. You must uphold the Board of Elections' well-deserved firing of Richard Barron. Thank you for the opportunity to comment. Fulton County and all the good people of Georgia are watching what you do today. Public comment by Nina Corsten of Milton. I strongly oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. Happy Faces is a temporary agency which hire unproved, unqualified candidates with little or no onsite training. Furthermore, they've been proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. We need local community volunteers who are well-trained and care about transparency, fairness, and integrity of our election process. Alex Wan's position as Chair of the Elections Board expires next month. I oppose his reappointment and strongly encourage his successor to fill this important role. Mr. Wan proved to be highly partisan and needs to be replaced. Lastly, the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Elections Director. Thank you for your time. Public comment by Hillary Harris of Milton. Election integrity in Georgia is paramount, and the Board must not continue with the status quo. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. No temp agency should be part of the Georgia elections, especially one that has proven itself unworthy and, and untrustworthy and partisan. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Quentin Reynolds of Atlanta. I support and expect the collaboration with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in crisis services, behavioral health services, and other community needs. Pay for it through the American Rescue Plan, including the $20 million under consideration for a proposed behavioral health crisis center. Fulton County has no crisis services. We need other options to reduce the number of people in jail. Public comment by Regina Santoro of Alpharetta. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Scott Maggio of Roswell. It's come to my attention that Happy Faces Personnel Group is seeking approval for a statewide contract to run our elections in Georgia. I am vehemently opposed to such a contract as this agency was not transparent at all during the last election cycle as a highly partisan group. Furthermore, I oppose the extension of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is, much like Happy Faces, highly partisan and should not oversee any Elections Board going forward. Lastly, I support the Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Judy Abi. I strongly oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Kristy Fiskus. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Sue Vah of Beaufort. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Janice Johnston of Atlanta. I strongly oppose contracting with Happy Faces to provide people to work in election offices, polls, or areas that handle and process ballots. I witnessed problems in the last elections with these temp employees from logistics to processing to scanning ballots. Their work was sloppy, and they appeared to disregard instructions they were given. Their presence lends an appearance that gives observers and monitors no confidence in the conduction of the election process. Hire local workers that are bipartisan and have motivation in a secure and fair election. Public comment by Kathy Drouin of Monroe. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group Incorporated to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board's decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Lee Daniels of Atlanta, Len Daniels, I'm sorry, of Atlanta. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. It was brought, it has brought way too much criticism and doubt to Georgia's recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Dr. Laura, Laura Hansen of Atlanta. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by John Fiskus of Atlanta. I am writing to, to say that I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel to run our elections. This is a temporary agency proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Rod Rich of Atlanta. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel to run our elections. This is a temporary agency that has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Susan Janowski. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency which has proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. Public comment by Cheryl Jones. Please do not approve the contract for Happy Faces Temp Agency to have anything to do with our elections. The way these, the way that these people handled the absentee ballots was atrocious. Signatures weren't verified. Computers with scanners were left logged in and turned on. Ballots were scanned without signatures. We need to have honest and competent people doing this important work. Election workers should be employees of the county who have been adequately trained and background-checked. Public comment by Lily Points. My name is Lily Points, and I live in DeKalb County, but go to school and work in District 4 of Fulton County. As you consider how to allocate funds, including federal dollars provided by the American Rescue Plan, I want, I want you to know what I expect the county to do, everything in its power to de, to de-incarcerate individuals in the Fulton County jail system. Understand that taxpayers are ultimately footing the bill for the stimulus money, and your decisions need to serve us taxpayers. We don't, we don't want to see more of our neighbors locked up because the City of Atlanta and Fulton County officials were convinced that the path to safety is actually the backwards path of continuing mass incarceration. I expect you all to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population through investing in the community. We need other options in our community in order to reduce the number of people in jail, such as crisis services, behavioral health services, housing, jobs, training, and other community needs identified by people who have been doing this work for years. Any federal funding our cities and counties receive today should be invested in such community services which will, which will curb jail populations sustainably in the long term by providing resources to people who have been cut off for too long. Thank you for receiving and considering this comment as you do your work today. Public comment by Myra Ray from College Park. Good morning Commissioners. I am Myra Ray, and I'm a resident of College Park in Fulton County. I support the R.I.P. plan to help our people and business get back on their feet. I know you held the item from the last meeting, but now is the time to vote yes. Mortgage, utilities, and rental assistance will keep families in their homes where there has been job loss and layoffs. Grants to our small businesses will help keep mom-and-pop shops open and family-owned businesses up and running. Please vote yes on the rescue plan today. It's the right thing to do, please, and thank you. Public comment by Michelle Sarkisian. I oppose the approval of the statewide contract with the Happy Faces Personnel Group to run our elections. This is a temporary agency proven to be highly partisan and not transparent in the most recent elections. I also oppose the reappointment of Alex Wan as Chair of the Elections Board. He is highly partisan and should not be in this role. I also support the Elections Board decision to terminate Richard Barron as Director of Fulton County Elections. I expect better from our decision-makers, and the track record with Happy Faces is a bad one, as we are finding out more daily. Georgia has been an embarrassment in our country relative to election integrity. Do better. Do not be coerced into bad choices. Thank you. Public comment by Scott Ponder. Greetings to Commissioners. My name is Scott Ponder. I'm a Fulton County resident and small business owner in Midtown Atlanta. The Commission has always been on the side, on the side of people in need and my business has provided chronic illness care to indigent patients since 2008. I strongly support the R I P plan to help my colleagues, patients, friends, and I recover from the economic hardships of the global pandemic. Home mortgage, rental, and utility assistance will help keep us in our homes. Grants to our small businesses will help keep our family-owned businesses open. I desperately need you to help to assist my community because we're all in this together. So please vote yes on the rescue implementation plan today. Thank you in advance. Public comment by Brian Weaver, Councilman in Johns Creek. Good morning, Mr. Chairman, and greetings to my Commissioner Liz Hausman and my fellow, and all fellow Commissioners. I am Councilmember Brian Weaver for the City of Johns Creek. I'm a retired Fulton County Police Officer with more than 26 years of service here before joining the Johns Creek Police Department and retiring as a major second-in-command before winning a seat on our City Council. I come today to enthusiastically support and urge you, your unanimous passage of the resolution to enact the county's rescue implementation plan, the R I P plan, with the money coming to our county from the American Rescue Plan signed by President Biden in March. I think that you all, meeting jointly with the mayors and the cities and agreeing to work together on this issue is great. As elected officials, I know that you know that every dollar matters when we send our hard-earned taxpayer dollars to Washington and it's nice to have some of that money come back to help us here at home. I have people here in Johns Creek who have been hit hard by the pandemic, both health-wise and economically. The money coming to the county will be an economic shot in the arm, just as much as the vaccine is a shot in the arm to fight the pandemic. Money in the pocket, shot in the arm, as per President Biden. Our city will also receive federal funds from the rescue plan, but in Johns Creek, we still pay county taxes too. So again, I ask that all of you, Commissioners and you Chairman Pitts unanimously, support the resolution before you today that will allocate some of the funds and I ask you to put them to good use to not only help my constituents, but everyone who lives and works in Fulton County. God bless you and thank you so much. Public comment by Sojourner Maribel Grimmette. Good morning. My name is Sojourner Maribel Grimmette and I live in Fulton County. I'm a proud resident of District 6. This Commission must continue to be on the side of those in need. Please vote yes on the rescue implementation plan. May God continue to guide you in the making the right choices for all people who call Fulton County home. Thank you. Public comment by Eloise Dukes. I'm Eloise Dukes, a resident of Fulton County. I am in complete support of the R I P plan to help people and businesses get back on their feet. Please, please vote yes on this rescue plan. Public comment, Mandisha Thomas. This Commission has always been on the side of people in need, whether you live in South Fulton, North Fulton, or Atlanta. Our Commission has always helped us out and now more than ever, we need you all to step up and help us. That starts with you all adopting the rescue plan. I say let it rip, Commissioners. Now is the time. Put the, plus, these are really our tax dollars just being returned to us. Please vote yes on the rescue implementation plan. God bless you all and thank you for listening. Comment by Pro-Tip Bieswah. Please vote yes on the rental assistance, rental assistance and helping small businesses. I'm Wendy Pittman and I'm a resident of Fulton County. I support the R I P plan to help our people and get businesses back on their feet. I know you held the item from last meeting, but now's the time to vote yes. Home mortgage, rental, and utilities assistance will keep families in their homes. Grants to our small businesses will keep mom, dad, and pop shops open. Family-owned businesses up and running. We have delayed this too long. I need your help for my community, so please vote yes on the American Rescue Plan today. It's the right thing to do. Thank you. Next public comment, especially to my Commissioner Lee Morris and Chairman Rob Pitts, who represent the area in which my business is located in Buckhead. My name is Andrew Hemming and I have been a longtime taxpayer in Fulton County and I own Jeans Body Tech Gym and Fitness Center. We have been in Buckhead since 1987. However, the pandemic forced us to drastically reduce hours, cut staff, and our payroll. Our income diminished, but the rent and other bills did not. Because clientele was, was reduced, our income was shot and we've been barely able to keep our doors open. I am writing to you today because I cannot, because I cannot join you live. Public comment by Ashley Dixon. My name is Ashley Dixon and I'm a former correctional worker. I've seen firsthand that jails and prisons make people worse and not better as a result. This includes not just prisoners, but everyone who comes into contact, in contact with the system of locking human beings in cages. The system does not rehabilitate people in jails and does not keep people safe. What our community needs is more investment in crisis services, behavioral health services, and other community needs. Locking people in cages is not a solution. You can pay for these through services, through the American Rescue Plan, including the $20 million under consideration for a proposed behavioral health crisis center. Please do the right thing and utilize the money to invest in our community and collaborate with the City of Atlanta to eliminate the jail population. Thank you. And I'm asking that Commissioner Morris, Pitts, and the rest of you worthy officials, approve the resolution to enact the rescue implementation plan and support grants to small businesses with the American Rescue Act funds earmarked for our county. A grant from the county to businesses like mine will not, will be the financial shot in the arm we need to make it out of this pandemic. I understand that you may be considering home mortgage help, summer jobs for kids, and arts funding too. These are great ideas and I hope you'll be able to provide some real help to those who need it. Best of luck. God bless you and your deliberations. If you do nothing else today, pass this RIP resolution. Next public comment. Ten hundred and four, that is a hundred and four. How many more? Mr. Carver? Forcibly removed from their communities and placed in confinement, some for the crime of poverty, some detained indefinitely for a trial without so much of a conviction. All victim of a government that would rather endlessly throw money at policing in prisons instead of addressing these needs people actually have. Housing treatment, income employment, all of these would provide infinitely more community safety than any number of cages would. There's even more money to do it in addition to money that could be directed away from cops in jails at the time. The American Rescue Plan provides so many funds that could start a new vision for community safety. There are thousands of people in Fulton County Jail along with thousands more that love and care for them inside and outside, who would be so much safer with these essential services. We don't need any more cages. We just need freedom. That was Lucas Irving. Next public comment is from Dantia Wilkinson. My parents, father age 85, mother age 80, and I are residents of Fulton County. We strongly support the RIP plan to help our people and businesses get back on their feet. I'm aware of the item held from last meeting, but now's the time to vote yes. Home mortgages, rental, and utility assistance will help keep families in their homes. Grants to our small businesses will help keep mom and pop shops open and family businesses up and running. Let's not forget our senior centers as well. This has been delayed long enough. My parents and I need your help. Our county of Georgia, our county in Georgia is Fulton. So please vote yes and do, on the rescue plan today. It's simply the right thing to do. Thank you. Next is from, next public comment is from Shere Khan Kool. As lead alumna, as lead Atlanta alumna and a mental health counselor serving the citizens of Fulton County, I fully expect and encourage you to collaborate with the City of Atlanta to reduce the jail population by investing in our communities, particularly in behavioral health services, crisis services, and other community needs. You have the ability to pay for these through the American Rescue Plan, including the $20 million under consideration for a proposed behavioral health crisis center. Fulton County does not have the crisis services we desperately need and jail is not a humane or viable option for people suffering from mental health or substance abuse disorders. People need care, not cages, to get well. Public comment from Annie Briggs of Fulton County. I am asking the Commission to approve the American, the rescue implementation plan in these uncertain times that we find ourselves. Providing a little help to agencies and people in our community is just the right thing to do. Thank you. That is the last of our email submissions.
You've earned your keep today. So, Mr. Manager, food is being prepared. So how long may I ask you to shorten your, dramatically, drastically shorten your presentation?
Yes, sir. So the plan is for me to do two or three-minute overview and then answer any questions to conclude no later than 30 minutes. So this would conclude at 1:10, I suppose.
Is that okay? Food is here. You want to recess now or here? But your pleasure. All right. So let us, I hear that and we'll entertain a motion to recess for lunch, executive session where we do have a couple of items of real estate, personnel, and litigation. Is there a motion? All right. To approve by, Commissioner Updo Rockman, seconded by Commissioner Morris. Let's vote, please.
And the vote is open. Motion passes unanimously. And the motion passes, four ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
Is there a motion to accept the, to grant the request for representation that was discussed in item two on the executive session agenda?
So moved.
Motion to approve by Commissioner Morris and seconded by Commissioner Ellis.
And the vote is open.
Please vote.
And the motion passes, four ayes, zero nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item.
On page five, County Managers Items Under Open and Responsible Government, 21-0364, Presentation of COVID-19 Operational Response Update.
Mr. County Manager.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you, Madam Chair and Madam Vice Chair and Commissioners. We'll be trying a new approach today with the COVID response update. Our understanding is the consensus from the group is to have disinformation submitted, allowing for a 30-minute discussion after some opening comments. So we'll be moving to that approach. Also, you may notice today we are trying out a new seating arrangement, kind of providing, providing seating and mics for all the folks that generally are interacting on these agenda items. So we'll continue probably to adjust that as we go, but we appreciate your acceptance of those two new approaches. As you'll see from this information that's included in this report, it may be premature perhaps to go to this format, but I'll attempt to summarize it upfront and then our team is available to answer any questions. Starting with the trends, they remain very good. The seven-day average is at 63. That's the lowest in over a year in terms of new cases. The percent positive is at 3.5%. Again, that's below the 5% benchmark for contact tracing. And hospitalizations are now below 200 and the death rate below one per day. So those are all the best that they have been in some period of time. Vaccines remain our primary focus. Now, having delivered 480,000 vaccines through our three primary locations, we are seeing a declining demand for those, moving from 50,000 to 60,000 per week down to around 15,000 to 20,000 per week now. We are anticipating an increase in demand with the new ability of children above the age of 15 to participate in vaccines and we're beginning to see that at each of our locations. We have some interesting new data, though, that I think is very compelling for why the public should consider getting the vaccine. I'll just relate a couple of statistics here now. For our population at 55 and above, over 80% of them now have been vaccinated and they now represent only 30% of those households that are being hospitalized, or, excuse me, individuals that are having to enter the hospital with COVID-related treatment. In the age category of 15 to 35, only 15% are so have been vaccinated and they're representing over 60% of those being hospitalized. I could say that. So it is very compelling that, again, vaccines do prevent both new cases as well as progression of the, of the symptoms. We continue to plan our transition to mobile units, the first of June to mid-June. We now have 11 operational. I think we are closing the health equity gap that we have been focused on and talking about, particularly in the Asian and Latino populations. We've reached effectively the population targets. In African-American, we have improved that from 18% to 27% of that population, or that being a percent of the population vaccinated. It needs to be around 41%. So there's still clear effort needed there and we'll be talking about both the Black Cross messaging program and a session with Concerned Clergy this, this week. We also have ZIP Code information that we have been able to obtain from the Department of Public Health that really now will help us target our, again, both messaging and mobile vaccination units and that information's included in your, in your deck. I've asked the team to lay out what the planning assumptions are, not just for 2021, but 2022 in terms of vaccinations and they have done so, so that's included in your deck. It will show that we'll continue in this emergency response mode potentially through 2022. With FEMA support ending on September the 30th, the use of 4700 North Point continuing through that period, a South Fulton location to complement North Point. We suggested South Annex. We'll still have to do some due diligence on that in terms of parking and the like, as well as staffing support from the partners that we've had previously. And the cost of that is estimated at $15 million through 2022. And again, we have anticipated that in our use of the American Recovery Act, or American Rescue Act funds. In addition to that, we have also taken a look at what it will take in the Emergency Rental Assistance Program to ramp up the adjudication process. We believe that we have cleared the process of most of its issues. We have additional folks on board, but now as we do the math, and Dr. Rochelle can comment on this if you do have questions, it would take about $2 million more in professional services, dollars, staffing, in order to finish that first tranche in a reasonable period of time, meaning 60 days. Without that additional funding, I think it could extend out as long as a year, which of course is unacceptable. So we would suggest that we allocate $2 million additional dollars from either the Recovery Act, or, excuse me, the Rescue Act funds or from the funds that the Board allowed us to place at the first of the year. So these two items alone are good examples of why having a broad plan and ample contingency funds are, is advisable, you know, especially when this timeframe runs all the way through 2024. And I think, you know, most importantly, we're still concerned about what we don't know. So it's not what we do know, it's what we don't know at this stage of the game. So again, we appreciate having the flexibility to, to deal with the plan as we've outlined it. We have also worked with the County Attorney and outside Counsel McGuire Woods on compliance challenges and we've identified a couple, just to bring to your attention. The pandemic pay plan, I think we said before, probably doesn't fit without adjustments because it's very dependent, the language, on a certain set of employees performing identifiable functions as opposed to broadly applied. The other, which I'm a little bit surprised by as a compliance challenge, is the court backlog plan. They've given us some indication that hiring people above the levels that we have had historically in place is not part of the rescue plan. So we're going to have to look for either preclearance, I think, from the U.S. Treasury and/or additional guidance before we can move forward effectively or confidently with, with that. So those two are two that deserve more, more review. We've only focused really on our plan as presented to the B O C and believe that the approach that we used for the last year has served you and us and our citizens, most importantly, well. I think we've delivered the best citizen-centric outcome from basically any observer. And our plan, again, as you recall, included three broad contours. Health response, operational stability, and community support. An ample contingency, last year we kept about 20% of that contingency until the distribution that we made to the cities. This year we have about that in the plan as proffered. Of course, routine reporting every two weeks and then this emergency procurement posture, which has really allowed us to act and adjust as appropriate. us to act and adjust as appropriate. So we look forward to answering your questions today about this, ensuring the public, of course, has access to this information, and then adjusting the plan based on any policy decisions that the board reaches today. So with that, Madam Vice Chair, we're ready to answer any questions about the material.
Thank you, Mr. County Manager. Do we have any questions from, okay, Commissioner Ellis?
Just a question on the vaccination trends. I know we said that they're slowing, but do you have a sense what they are on sort of a daily basis at our fixed sites now?
So there, in the, you know, the last two weeks have been 16,000 and 21,000 respectively. So if you did that, I guess, on a week, on a daily basis, Matt, what would that be? A thousand, maybe, average per day if you took all three sites?
So it, depending on the site and the day, we're doing anywhere between 800 and 1,000 a day right now, and that should be good for about two weeks, and then it would kind of subtract about 50% after that for our fixed sites.
Do we have a sense of the 12- to 15-year-old group coming in? Is it significant at this stage or minimal?
It's not where we would like for it to be. We are working with the Atlanta Public Schools and Full and Kind Public Schools there. We'll be doing robo-calls, pushing on information to their student body to go and urge them to go ahead and get vaccinated. We know this is finals weeks and exams are going on this time, so parents are really hesitant to go ahead and vaccinate a child, especially if there is a fever or something associated with that. So we're hoping for a pickup next week when the schools here does answer.
Okay. So based on those numbers you just shared, the fixed sites in aggregate are still doing more volume than the mobile sites?
Yes.
By a fairly wide margin at this point still. Okay. 12 to 15, slow. Don't know what to attribute that to, whether it's schools still being in session, or whether it's going to be resistance to that particular age group. And we'll know, we'll watch that based upon what happens with school ending. I think there was a note in here that we're going to start having vaccinations available at two of our health clinics?
So the assumptions that you're referring to, sir? We're looking at in mid-June will be a stand-down time period of both the Georgia National Convention Center and Mercedes-Benz Stadium's Community Vaccination Center. And we'll be transitioning to a smaller fixed locations at the various health centers. I believe it was six inside the assumptions section, and then the northern one would like to continue. Dr. Paxton and Dr. Holland would like to continue a combined testing and vaccination effort at the 4700 North Point location due to more parking spaces in that location, sir.
Okay. And then on the, this might be a question for the manager, just on the, our employee base right now with what we've been tracking, we've now, I guess, at least got record of, what is that, 40% of our employee base being vaccinated?
Yes, sir. I think it's 12. I'll get to that chart. I think it's 12 or 1,200 now.
Right.
And 41%. 1,256 have received their offer, and 450 are in the queue. So I guess total of that will be 1,700.
I noticed in, like, I know some data was shared with us a little bit about, kind of, within certain work groups, but are we doing anything to encourage, you know, either your department heads and/or particularly, I guess, sort of the, some of the constitutional officer groups, the Sheriff's Department, that sort of stuff, to talk to their employees about reporting the data?
Yes, so we have a, every other week, meeting with all department heads, including elected officials, and that's the place that we have put this information before them, and we'll continue to emphasize its importance.
Okay, all right. Thank you.
Commissioner Housman?
Thank you, Vice Chair. Couple of questions on some of the data that's included in this package. The vaccine-eligible residents of Fulton County number is listed at 748, 748,000, and that's 12 and over at this point? Is that?
Yes, ma'am.
Included in that? So I'm just kind of wondering where that number comes from. I see that you've got how many residents have been vaccinated from the DPH site. Is that where the 748 number comes from also?
Would you like to go ahead and explain that, Doug, how we came up? It's based upon 1.1 million and 80% of that, and then Doug will go ahead and further describe that.
So you start out with 1.1 to get herd immunity, which is our goal from November, was 80% of that, and then also 15% of the population isn't eligible, so.
Okay. But there really is probably more people eligible than the 748?
Yes, ma'am, but that's our goal number.
Okay, it's the goal number. Okay, that's why it's not actually the numbers of folks in the county, because I knew we had 1.1 million, so that's the reason I was asking that question. You mentioned in here that we're going to develop a contact tracing program?
It's enhanced it or to keep it alive, so right now-
I thought we still had one, already had one.
We do. The Board of Health does have it as part of the Epidemiology Department, is to just ensure that department is at the staffing levels they need. So now that we're getting back to the percent positives, which are manageable to do contact tracing, we need to ensure that they are prepared for this next phase of the process of COVID-19, to identify individuals that do test positive and who they came in contact with, and to see if those individuals were actually vaccinated or not. And then if that's not the case, they would have to quarantine during that time period.
Right. I mean, I know what the program is. I just didn't realize that we had kind of paused it. It's like, but it makes sense that we might have-
It didn't do the best, probably, the way I wrote that bullet point, ma'am. What it is, is just making sure we can continue that through 2021 as well as into 2022. Core supplements that program. What they do is help us go do door knocking. So if someone does not answer the phone after repeated calls, what they'll do is come knock on my door and then take that next step on behalf of the Board of Health, ma'am.
All right. And then some of your assumptions here. One of them is employers will mandate vaccinations upon approval of a vaccine in 2022. You really expect that?
We are seeing in other parts of the country, Texas and other locations are doing it now, it's still in the EUA standpoint of time. We do believe that if it gets to that point, there are employers out there that will take that step and mandate a vaccine for employees that work for them. It is an assumption, so it's based upon what we see at this time and some of the information that we're gathering from our critical infrastructure and private sector partners that we're speaking to.
But that would be after it gets full authorization, not the emergency?
Yes, ma'am.
Six to nine months for Pfizer right now, out for full approval.
Okay. I know they're still trying to determine how long it lasts, so we don't even know that at this point.
There is definitely a possibility of booster shot that we'll have to. That's one of the assumptions inside there, as well as that there will be a booster shot during the fall or winter period of this year or next year, ma'am.
All right. And then as we transition, you mentioned that all the Board of Health clinics will offer vaccinations except for the North Clinic. That's because we have 4700 North Point?
The proximity to it, it just makes sense. The larger parking lot and the ability to go ahead and welcome more people to that location. The Board of Health and our team went ahead and had a discussion, and we felt that was a better location to do that.
Yeah, I just wanted to be clear for the public. If they read that we're not going to have one in the north, they might wonder why we're not having one in the north, which, of course, we would not do.
Got the points, ma'am.
And then it says that we're going to be the responsible for booster vaccines for healthcare workers, public safety employees, and critical infrastructure partners. Are the hospitals also going to be involved in this, especially with healthcare workers? So-
They'll be taking care of their population like they did last time. We're looking at the folks at like a dental office or a physician's office that does not have privileges at a hospital, may not have that relationship. We took care of that population this last time. We think that we'll be taking care of them again, ma'am.
Okay. It also says here that we're going to maintain an emergency declaration until 9:30, 21?
It's a recommendation that we have. Since that's the period of time that FEMA will allow us to do 100% reimbursement, they did recommend to us that we maintain our declarations, so we will be eligible for reimbursement to the 100% amount. If we do fall back and say we're no longer in a response and have our own declaration, it does become a point of contention with them as to why are we seeking response and reimbursement for an emergency response that we are no longer saying that we ourselves think that we're inside of an emergency response.
Okay, I guess I need clarity then on what exactly the emergency declaration includes.
And I think that would be something that we can work with the legal department of exactly what that verbiage would look like, but it would be similar to what the governor does every 30 days when he extends his emergency declaration for the public health response. And I'm sure that they could go ahead and put together a document that is similar in scope, but allow us to go ahead and meet the requirements of FEMA, ma'am.
Okay, because, I mean, now that we're meeting again in person and we're more engaged, I know we had a temporary order that allowed certain things to happen with the chairman and the county manager, which I'm not sure is actually needed anymore. So that's different from this?
Well, I would definitely defer to the legal team on that one. That's definitely outside my area of expertise there. I just know when it comes to what we normally do for reimbursements, and we have to declare normally as a local municipality, the state does as well.
Well, I get it for the federal component, but, I mean, we are actively working again now, and I just feel like some of the management stuff is our job.
I believe there are some things that would be beneficial for us through that emergency declaration, to be able to quickly procure things that we need to, especially if we're in a situation where it's a supply and demand, if there's only one vendor that we can find out there through the procurement process, we need to act quickly. So that'd be something I would ask the board to consider as we reshape a new declaration. How do we keep that piece inside there that allows us that flexibility?
That makes perfect sense. But on a routine basis, I don't know that everything's an emergency.
There's some things I would agree with you on that, ma'am, yes.
All right. And then finally, you got a preliminary review of use recommendations in the Treasury guidance, and it looks like a lot of things that we initially anticipated are not eligible. We can't pay wages for summer youth programs. We do training, but we can't do wages.
I'd like to defer to the county manager on that one.
Well, Sharon, if you want to comment on our analysis of the use cases?
Thank you.
Did I jump ahead? I'm sorry if I-
Oh, no, 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 that's fine. That's fine. Yes, Commissioner Housman, based on the preliminary review and the comments back from outside counsel, wages, they specifically identified that wages could not be paid for either the summer youth program or the job training program itself. That was a reference that they provided to us.
I mean, there's a lot of things listed here that I think we were thinking we could do, and it looks like we cannot.
There are some that will require, I believe, some additional effort to ensure that what we do allows us to be in compliance, specifically the court backlog project, which I think the county manager referenced in his remarks, as well as a premium pay plan. So the premium pay plan, as it was presented, would not be compliant, but there are guidelines provided around what premium pay you can offer and the manner in which it can be offered. And so we would have to take another look at the premium pay recommendation and bring something back to the board that would comply with the guidance that's been provided at this point from Treasury.
Is there any new guidance on the rental assistance or mortgage assistance that's different than the program we're trying to administer right now?
The rental assistance program is still being governed through the Emergency Rental Assistance, ERAP 1 and 2. They have gone ahead and released the funds for ERAP 2, or a portion of the funds for ERAP 2. But the criteria, the eligibility criteria, and all of the operational requirements and documentation requirements that we have been working on are still in place. Those have not, those have not been modified. The guidance that we received through outside counsel was for any additional funds that we may put into a rental assistance or a mortgage assistance program, should at a minimum use the guidance from the other federal programs as the floor, if you will, for what criteria we would have in place for any supplemental funds provided for rental assistance or mortgage assistance out of the local fiscal recovery funds. So they sort of connected the requirements throughout all of the, all of the different sources of funds for those purposes, if that makes sense.
You've got a tough job, don't you? Very complicated. Okay, so we had $18 million. Is that the local fund you just mentioned, or is that, what do you call on that fund?
$18 million, that is the allocation that the county received as part of the Emergency Rental Assistance Program from the Consolidated Appropriations Act in December of 2020, when the act was approved. And then as part of the American Rescue Plan, there was an additional allocation made for an Emergency Rental Assistance Program that's called ERAP 2. And that one, we are expecting to receive a total of $14 million. We already have received the $18 million and have those funds in-house from ERAP 1, and last week, we received 5.9 million of the $14 million that we expect to receive for ERAP 2. So we expect to have a total of $32 million for Emergency Rental Assistance between ERAP 1 and 2.
So we have already received some of the ARP funds?
Not the local fiscal recovery funds, not the portion of the 206 million. So within the American Rescue Plan, they have a lot of different programs within the American Rescue, American Rescue Plan. Emergency Rental Assistance in and of itself is a program, and we've received 5.9 million of that funding. The local, the state and local fiscal recovery fund, where we're expecting to receive the 206 million, we have not received those funds. We have submitted the application, gone through the certification process, and are awaiting word back from Treasury that they've received our documents and that everything is good. And then we will receive the first tranche of those funds.
Okay, so the big allotment of 206 stands alone?
Yes, ma'am.
And this is in addition to that? And there are other categories as well that are in addition to the 206? Is that correct?
Yes, ma'am.
And have we gotten a report or a list of what those additional categories are going to be?
Well, I mean, there's, from the act itself, there were lots of different resources that were being made available in many different ways. So there was funds that were made available for small businesses, but those funds will be administered through the SBA. There's-
I guess I'm referring to money that we would get, that we would be administering.
Right, so the two, the two resources that I was aware of that, and we were expecting to receive directly out of the rescue plan, was ERAP 2, that $14 million, of which we've received now 5.9, and the local fiscal recovery funds of 206 million, which will come into two different tranches.
What about broadband? Is that a separate category, or is that included in the 206?
It's included in the 206.
Okay. All right, well, back to the rental assistance. So we've had $18 million, and we've got another 5.9, did you say?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and we have been able to distribute right around a million?
Yes, ma'am.
So we heard heartbreaking stories this morning about folks being evicted and things like that, and I don't know if those folks would, if it's because of COVID or other reasons, but, I mean, what, how are we going to actually get this money where its intended purpose is, to help folks that are in trouble and behind on their rent and going to get evicted because of loss of a job or health reasons with COVID?
So that's what I referenced up front, and let me ask Dr. Rochelle to go into what the plan for recovery is on that.
Thank you.
Thank you. Pamela Rochelle, Deputy Chief Operating Officer. So Commissioner Housman, after some review of the data analytics for the adjudication process, we have determined that it will take an additional 124 staff in order to adjudicate every application in eight weeks. As you know, we received an overwhelming number of applications. We are continuing to go through those applications. And just to reiterate the eligibility criteria, this is for constituents who have lost a job, can demonstrate the impact of COVID, as well as homelessness. job, can demonstrate the impact of COVID, as well as homelessness, and have an income of 80% of the area median income. Once we receive those applications, each of those areas of eligibility are required to be verified with documentation. And we also are required to have the sign-off of the landlord on the elements of their rent ledger and their lease, and then we must verify all of the income for every household. And so we are continuing to move through that process. And as I indicated, it will take an investment of an additional 100-plus staff to move these applications in an eight-week time period. The ERAP 2 funds expire in 2025, and the ERAP 1 funds in the American Rescue Plan, Treasury has extended that deadline from December 31st to September 2022.
That's kind of shocking to hear that we have to get another 124 staff members just to do the paperwork required by the federal government. Yeah, it's just government at its worst. That's not what the intended purpose of that money is. Are we communicating this to anyone? I know you're going to go and try and get some preclearance on our court backlog plan. I mean, this is ridiculous. We've got folks out there that are really struggling, and we've got money and we can't help them.
No, it really is, and I think it's a nationwide problem, based on everything that we've, as well as at the state level. So we are and did ask Dr. Rochelle to summarize what some of these obstacles are, provide that to McGuire Woods, who will then take it forward in terms of federal lobbying. Again, I'm not optimistic.
We've got senators and congressional members, too, that need to hear about this.
Well, I think, again, we can posture it up. I think the likelihood of that changing is, from a speed and expediency standpoint, we're better off putting the staff against it to do whatever it takes to get the money out, which is what we asked Dr. Rochelle to develop.
Are we capped at how much administrative focus we can have in that money?
Yeah, so that's another complicating factor. You know, there is a 10% cap, and we don't know, and we did ask McGuire Woods to go further on this, can we use 2 million out of the funds that we'll receive in terms of 206 million to augment the administration of this? We don't know the answer to that yet. Their initial impression was no, but the good news is, because you gave us upfront 45.7 million to ensure that we didn't shut the lights off on December 31st, we could dip into those resources. So I guess my view is, one way or the other, we have to get this done. Time is of the essence. 2 million in a $300 million program is de minimis, and this is a very important program.
You know, it might be a small number in the scheme of things, but it really is a situation that is ridiculous, that we're spending money pushing papers around and making phone calls and trying to verify folks' situation. That money could go to real positive use, rather than, you know, just administrative functions. I just think that's a terrible situation. I think it's our job to communicate that to the feds, because you're right, we're not the only ones going through this. And what a waste of money, just in general. If it's 2 million, 3 million for us, you compound that with 3,000 counties across the country, that's a lot of money.
We're in violent agreement, but we kind of betwixt the rock and a hard place.
I get that, but our job is to communicate this. And so I would ask that we do reach out to our congressional partners and our senators and anybody and everybody that could possibly rectify this type of situation. I think it's our job to communicate that. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Housman. Commissioner Abdurrahman.
Thank you, Vice Chair. I noticed that you all spoke about contact tracing. Will it be contact tracing and case investigation, or will it be both? Okay, I just want to make a general, maybe, comment slash concern, because I do have a background in that. I would ask that, and you may already have this in place, but in my team lead supervisory role, dealing with that, the biggest problem that we had was in making the phone calls, we put more emphasis on phone calls than we did emails and texts. When we did the text, we immediately moved the process. When we did the email, it moved faster. In this day and age with phone calls, a lot of people will not answer a call coming from an unpublished number, and they will be very reluctant to share information, because we do have those that try to get information from individuals for scamming. And so sometimes when there's an email or a text, da-da-da, I'm with da-da-da, and this is the information, feel free to give me a call. So I would just make that suggestion, that if we're going to be doing contact tracing, if we're going to be doing case investigation, that we modernize it as much as possible. Do we have to make the phone calls? Yes, but in this day and age, we got to understand what we're dealing with, and we're dealing with people who on the move so much, and they'll respond to a text quicker and an email quicker. And so that's the only thing that I wanted to say to you all. In response to the comments about the individuals that are seeking help this morning and the bureaucracy that we sometimes become a part of, the American Rescue Plan allows flexibility because we can do a cash transfer program, which makes it easier to get funds to individuals. And so I think we need to be crystal clear and transparent to the public when we're dealing with what is the American Rescue Plan and what is the CARES Act, what we can do and what we can't do, because we got to understand we are in a pandemic. I don't know by anybody else, but this is my first pandemic. And so it's fluid, it will change sometimes. And County Manager, I insist that you have the authority of what you need to change it, because it may change. I know we get caught up in the red tape a lot, but keep in mind, when we dealt with the rental, because I know that my office, the mighty six office, fielded a lot of these calls, Dr. Rochelle, and we worked, thank you, we worked hand in hand. The issues with the rental was a lot of time, the landlords did not want to work with us. They wanted the individuals out of the property, and so it tied our hands and slowed our process. But let's not allow that to keep us from helping the people who need mortgage help. You have a whole different scenario. And also understand, it takes staff to do this. We must have adequate staff in place to do this in a timely and efficient manner. We are in the middle of a pandemic. Fulton County has always been the first out there to streamline and do it correctly, and that will take money, and I understand that. Do I want the taxpayers' money wasted? No, but we waste it by not doing anything. And so we must understand that desperate times sometimes cause for immediate action and tweaking as you go. And so I just want my colleagues to understand, we do have a call out there, we do have a cry. This is why I have worked so hard with the county manager. I don't want to do his job, he doesn't want to do mine, but we want to work better for one Fulton, to make sure our constituency gets the best bang for their tax dollar. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Abdurrahman. Commissioner Ellis?
Just to reiterate a couple of points. So we've not received any of the AWRAP funds to date, correct? What's that?
Excuse me, we've not received any of the local fiscal recovery funds.
Okay, so not received any of those funds yet. So even if we had any programs stood up, we have no funds to distribute. And I know we'd already made a call, we'd already made a, we've already allocated out these funds for nonprofits that would be doing work in emergency relief and so forth via the, you know, kind of CSP sort of, you know, souped-up, you know, aspect of things, right? And are we in a position to give them enough in terms of guidelines about what to be ready for in terms of how they would need to be able to act? Are we still waiting on that, too?
So the McGuire Woods preliminary guidance has provided some broad guidance as it relates to the community has to be low income, we have to demonstrate the impact from COVID as well. So yes, we do have some preliminary guidance from McGuire Woods.
Yeah, and I think we just remind us board that, you know, certainly, we have a track record already through what we did last year in working with these groups and a process, and obviously we'll need to, you know, tweak it, you know, given whatever these new guidelines will be. But, you know, that's ready to go. It sounds like we're pretty close to ready to go, it's more just waiting on the funding to come through.
Yes, sir.
Okay, so we're going to be able to deploy those. In terms of, I see in here, like, you've noted that the premium pay plan is sort of prescribed right now, would not be in compliance. You know, and I do think this sort of the pay aspect is something that we just need to continue to have discussions about as a board, as to what we, what would we, what do we think is the best thing to do? We've got a lot of different, you know, things at play. We've got employees who basically came in every day throughout the pandemic, and then we've got employees who were largely at home for large elements of the pandemic. And one thing I did notice in some of the guidelines was that work performed from home was not eligible in terms of the premium pay component. That was one of the things I saw in some level of correspondence related to some of the requirements. So the pay piece does seem like it's going to be particularly tricky as to what's going to qualify. And I also think that we've got a number of different sort of equity questions that, you know, kind of span throughout our employee network, right, about, you know, kind of what certain employees were doing and are doing versus what others are doing and who might be eligible. So I think we need to really kind of, you know, make sure we do that the right way, not only for compliance with this act, but also for, you know, what's the best way to take care of our employee base, particularly those who, you know, have been in more of a hazard-like situation and who have been parts of groups that have performed services consistently throughout the pandemic, because I think there's certainly the compliance question, and then there's just the response to the community standpoint as well, because providing a large sum of money to, you know, employees associated, like it or not, with a group that, whose services were really not being provided throughout an extended period of time, is not going to be met well from a, it's not something my constituents are asking us, asking me to do. Go pay bonuses to groups of employees who are associated with services you didn't provide for, you know, the better part of a year. So I think that there, I think we need to be particularly careful about what we do and have a lot of discussion around, you know, the pay component of this aspect. On the, are we still doing the, we'd entered into this sort of jobs training, you know, kind of partnership with, I think it was a collaborative with two or three folks. Is that still in place?
It's still in place, but would have to be funded anew, and that's what we contemplated under this.
That's your recommendation on that, is that we would continue to utilize that program and just place additional funding into it? I do think the court backlog piece is particularly important in being ready to go with that. So can we, are we, so is the idea to go ahead and start to seek preclearance on that sort of immediately?
Okay, I don't know if you want to answer that, but that's how we left it end of last week.
Yes, that's the plan, to go ahead and seek preclearance.
Okay, so like within the next week or so?
Yes.
Preclearance?
Yeah, see if we can get an answer back as soon as possible.
Okay. And on the notion of sort of mortgage assistance, are we aware of, I guess we're still, we're still of the understanding, or this is mentioned that we felt like the state is going to run a mortgage assistance program?
Yes, Commissioner Ellis, there is a pool of resources that's coming out of the rescue plan that will be administered by the state. It's the Homeowners Assistance Fund. That's specifically for homeowners for mortgage assistance. There's a group of expenses that would qualify under that, mortgage forbearance, fees associated with your mortgage, as well as utilities, and some other, like POA, passed-through POA fees and stuff like that would all be wrapped up into that particular program.
Do we know what the amount of funds coming into the state?
I haven't seen, I haven't seen that allocation, that state allocation. And I reached out to DCA several weeks ago, and they responded back that they were still working on their plan, but they provided no other information. I'm not sure if Anna or Dr. Rochelle have gotten anything further.
No, we don't have any indication at this time how the state plans to administer those funds. They haven't, they haven't communicated that to us. I think they're very much like us in a holding pattern in terms of trying to develop a plan in anticipation of funds, but I think they don't know enough to share information with us yet at this point around specifics of how that will be administered.
Do we, on that specific component, is there an anticipation that Treasury is going to have more specific guidance around that notion of a mortgage relief program?
That's possible, Commissioner. I mean, if we take our learnings from the rental assistance program, even with the second tranche of funds, they've wanted you to follow the existing guidance. So if that's the case, they'll likely be closely aligned to whatever guidance around mortgage assistance that currently exists.
I mean, I think that's the other, I mean, obviously, there's, there's a need in this area for it to be addressed, and I think we all get that, and we all want to be responsive to it. You know, but I don't necessarily think we want to double down on inefficiency in getting into a scenario like we are with the ERAP piece, if, you know, if this is something that, you know, the state can administer more effectively than we can. And that's going to be the expectation, is if you're going to have a program, it's got to mirror what the state program is. And then is that just duplicitous in terms of the administration of it? You know, so I guess is that, we're not aware of anybody that stood up on, we don't know what it looks like, what sort of requirements they put around it, what, you know, what partners they've used to administer it, you know, et cetera, right? This group we're working with is not, on the apartment side, hasn't done this on the mortgage side?
Commissioner Ellis, yes, the group that we're working with out of Louisiana Apostle Wath in Netterville, they have worked with mortgage assistance through disaster recovery previously, and they are working with states that are administering mortgage assistance, because the format across the country is that the mortgage assistance dollars will go to states and not counties.
Okay, so that is a format across the country?
Yes, sir.
It's going through states? Okay. And then on the, I know we had a good discussion with the mayors last week, but obviously we didn't, there was a lack of presence from, you know, from one significant city, which would have represented, you know, almost the same amount of money that we have coming into us. So, you know, there was good discussion around collaboration, but we didn't reach any sort of agreement around any particular areas in which we were going to focus in on, at least I didn't walk away with that necessarily, that understanding about, we didn't get, we had an agreement about, we'd like to collaborate, but not necessarily about what we were going to collaborate on. You know, so I do think that that needs to be sort of the next step of that as to what that could conceivably look like, and maybe we have to ask of them about what specific areas they want to, they think they want to focus in on. I mean, I think that, you know, the, we had a loan program in the first half, right, which worked fairly well with this third-party partner. We did not do a quote-unquote grants program, right? I don't know if some of them did a specific grants program on, are we aware of any of them that did a grants-related program?
I've heard several of them comment on that, but I have no details.
Okay, so I think that piece of it, in terms of business relief and So, I think that, that piece of it, in terms of business relief and that sort of stuff that, you know, is, is an area of potential collaboration with them and that we, you know, continue to have discussions along those lines. So, that's all.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman?
Thank you, Vice Chair. I'll make it quick. Just for the listening public and for the viewer transparency, me and my team, we spent nine hours with Maguire Woods to make sure that the resolution that I put forward, even though I know we're not talking about it right now, but I just want to be crystal clear, that it was compliant. And there was a question put forth that there is a compliance catch-all clause, which will allow for the county manager, the management team, to come back with a readout on what programs work, which needs adjustment and which are administratively too burdensome or risky from a audit perspective. So, the county is at all times compliant. And so, I just, because I'm hearing that word, non-compliant, and I don't know if it's in what I put forth or not, because if it is, this is the first time I'm being told that. And so, I think it's very important that we let the listening audience know what's compliant, what's not compliant. And also, if we're talking about the pandemic pay, I was in a lengthy meeting yesterday with the county manager with, I would say, I thought was the workaround, or because I am on the same page with him, I said eligible. I didn't say all. And so, when you talk about eligible employees, you really do know, you do not want to leave out the other ones as evidenced by the young man today with the tax commissioner's office, who has had a high rate of COVID infections in that office. And so, if we have general funds, which was my understanding, and we would be able to do it, that it would be a goal and it would be compliant. However, if it's not compliant, and you come back and say to us, county manager, that it's not compliant, then the resolution still stands all eligible. And so, I just want to make sure, I'm sitting here and I'm hearing non-compliant, and I want to make sure that I understand whether, after spending nine hours with Maguire Woods, my team and I did, that it did not go to waste. Because my understanding is it is compliant, and there is a catch-all for the county manager to do his job to make sure we are in compliance.
Is that a question? For?
Yes, it's a question.
For Madam County Attorney?
The resolution and plan put forth by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman is, is a policy, excuse me, is sort of a policy piece that includes an implementation plan attached to that. There is language in the resolution that provides that whatever programs are ultimately funded, they will be in compliance with the plan. So, that's sort of a policy piece. When you look at the actual plan itself, there could be issues with the way they're framed. And so, I think what the Commissioner's saying is that because the resolution has the language in it that says, "will at all times be in compliance with," "will fall within the requirements of the rescue plan," that the expectation is that the county manager will take the plan, determine whether or not the implementation plan itself is compliant, and will make adjustments necessary so that it will be compliant. So, that, so I think that that's the, I think that's how the two issues sort of mesh, because the resolution says, "will be in compliance," although the implementation plan itself may have things in it that don't appear that they'll stay in this form, that the county manager will need to make adjustments so that they'll come in compliance with the American Rescue Plan and the guidance.
Exactly. And that was at the determination, after nine hours of meeting with the outside counsel, that this was the best in order for, because this is what I don't want to do, and I want to go on record. I do not want to tie by policy your hands, county manager, or your office. I think we do a great job when we work together. And so, from a policy perspective, I want us to be in compliance, knowing that at any time, I am not the county manager, you and your team do a great job of making sure that we are in compliance and that we will not be subjected to audit. And so, it is written in such a way that you ultimately have the decision, and should you need to come back to us, you can. And so, this was not something that I dreamed about in a dream. This is something that conversations with outside counsel, including the county attorney, we all came to the same resolution. And so, I just wanted to make sure that not only my colleagues knew this, but any of the listening public knows it. Thank you, County Attorney.
Thank you, Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Commissioner Ellis?
Yeah. What I was speaking to is really kind of what's before us now, not any sort of resolutions that may be ahead of us. But, you know, going back to this housing piece, you know, I think this is, it's something on everybody's mind. I mean, we've been entrusted for doing this, the emergency rental assistance. And I'm looking at this fact sheet that was pushed out by HUD. And maybe this is getting to Dr. Rochelle's point about, from talking to this group we're working with, it says, "The legislation provides nearly $10 billion to be administered by the Treasury to help homeowners behind on mortgage and utility payments and avoid foreclosure and eviction." So, I think, I think it's important to try to understand what is, what is the intent of the act in terms of who is to be administering mortgage relief specifically? Because obviously, there's substantive amount of funds that are associated with it. And then, there's a question of who's supposed to be doing that before we're going down the path to try to set something up or commit some sort of funds to it? If the funds are already allocated to it, and there's already, you know, an assumed party that's going to administer those, I think we need to know that as we're trying to formulate our own plans. Because it's clear for me to, from the discussions that we've had so forth, that we're not clear on that issue. So, that's something if we could run to ground, I think it would be helpful to try to, try to get a sense of that and what those numbers are and what those different sort of housing components are, and what is the expectation by HUD and Treasury on those? So, that's it.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Any other speakers? Seeing none, I have a question for Madam County Attorney. If we pass the resolution, the RIP resolution, once it is approved, will that put the county manager in conflict with policy? If afterwards, he comes back and finds out that there are things in the resolution that are not compliant, will he even have the ability to change that? Because the resolution would already have been approved.
On page two of the resolution, the first now, therefore be it resolved, it provides that this is, this resolution is subject to any adjustments required to comply with the American Rescue Plan Act and the rules and regulations promulgated from time to time by the U.S. Department of Treasury. So, that ability to adjust is already included in the resolution.
All right. All right, thank you. Any other questions? All right. Mr. County Manager, anything else? Thank you. Madam Clerk, please sound the next item.
Continuing on page 521-0365, purchasing and contract compliance, request approval of a resolution to extend emergency purchasing authority of the chairman and county manager for COVID-19-related purchases.
Move approval, Madam Chair.
All right. All right. We have, it's not on the screen. We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Morris and second by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. I have a question for 365. I'm assuming this is going to be for Madam CFO. What funding will be used in this resolution? It doesn't specify. It simply says on line 19, "using the same process that was put in place to handle CARES Act-funded projects consistent with Fulton County Code of Ordinances 102-385." But there's nothing in this resolution that says what funding we're referring to.
Vice Chair Hall, it should reference the Emergency Response Reserve Fund, as well as the ERAP fund and the funds that will be provided under the American Rescue Plan. Anything, any of the funding sources that we have either self-provided or are being provided to us for the emergency response.
Madam County Attorney, can you point us to where that reference is made? Because I don't see it.
What reference?
Madam CFO said that it should refer to the ERAP funding and others, but I don't see anywhere in here where there's any reference made to the funding that we are extending this emergency purchasing authority for.
Well, I think, let me see specifically.
You know, the original was for CARES Act funding. It makes that very clear. But it states on line 19 that we're using the same process that was put in place to handle CARES Act-funded projects consistent with Fulton County Code of Ordinances 102-365. But it doesn't say what funding are we using for this particular resolution? Because CARES Act funding, I mean, that's done.
Right. So, what this is saying is that you would use the same process that's already been in place. So, that same process will continue through irrespective of whether it's CARES Act, ERAP, ERAP II, American Rescue Plan funds. So, there's a process that's already in place that they're following, and they're going to continue to follow that process for all of these plans that provide resources to the county.
Okay, well, I'd like to see this amended to literally state what funding we're using for this emergency procurement process, purchasing authority, the same way that we indicated CARES Act funding for the previous one.
Okay, we'll make that adjustment.
All right. Thank you so much. There is a motion on the floor by Commissioner Morris to approve and a second by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Let's vote. As amended. Oh, Commissioner Hausmann, you dropped yourself in the queue. All right, Commissioner Hausmann.
Okay, so this list is everything in 2020. Is that what we were just provided? But we're not voting on that. But that's just the current, we don't have anything for the current year, 2021?
I think we're on the previous item, Commissioner. Just the resolution to extend.
Well, I mean, the document I'm looking at is dated May 18th, but the backup material only go, May 18th, 2021, but it only goes through 2020, so. Is that the next item?
Yeah, this is, this is the resolution to extend the emergency purchasing authority, 0365. I think you may be.
Okay, he handed me two things. What is the reason we need to extend this emergency authority since we are meeting all the time in person again?
Commissioner Hausmann, it is in line with the comments that Mr. Callmire made regarding being able to assure our ability to procure goods and services timely in order to meet the need. As the needs arise, we may not have the time to be as nimble as we would need to be if we had to go through a open RFP process for professional services and things like that. So, it really allows us the flexibility to be able to execute on the programs that we're proposing in a timely manner. Specifically for the vaccination program and the FEMA reimbursement, it is important that we keep that emergency declaration in place to allow us to qualify for the full reimbursement. Otherwise, we will have to draw upon the resources that we've set aside in the general fund to cover that.
Are you suggesting then, that, since you mentioned the vaccination programs, that anything that we're doing currently would not be able to continue if we did not have this emergency order?
It's not that it, it would not be able to continue, but without it, then we would need to ensure that we use our invitation-to-bid process, go back through and use the RFP process for.
If it's a program that's in place, why would we have to rebid it?
So, if I, if I may, Sharon, if I can give an example, Commissioner, if you think about the emergency rental assistance program that we're administering now, the resolution's very specific that the actions have to be COVID-related. So, we have an emergency rental assistance program. We ran into adjudication challenges. And because this was in place from the last extension, we were able to partner with the firm to be able to ramp up our adjudication process without having to do a full solicitation to do that. The other thing I'd like the board to be aware of is, Felicia's very good at what she does. And for every single one of these, we can't just come to her with a recommended person to provide the service. We do actually have to request quotes. We do have to interview the providers. We do have to ensure that they made the qualifications. And so, it's not a simple, to steal a phrase, willy-nilly process. It is a very disciplined process, and we work with the purchasing department to ensure that all selections made under this emergency purchasing authority is representative of our government. So, two things I'd like to say is to provide the example on ERAP, but more importantly, that we do go through a selection process. It's just not as protracted as our normal procurement and solicitation processes are.
Thank you, Commissioner Hausmann. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman?
For the sake of transparency, is there expiration on this? How long would it last?
This resolution would carry us through July 6th.
Of this year?
Yes, ma'am. We've been bringing these forward at the second meeting each month, extending it in 30-day increments.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Any other questions? Commissioner Hausmann?
One more question. And this is for COVID-related purchases only, correct? Just for the public's benefit, I want to clarify that.
It is. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, the motion is on the floor as amended. Commissioner Morris move to approve. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, second.
And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. Madam Vice Chair and members of the board, we have an item that was to be moved up after the COVID update. Chairman Pitts' item on page eight.
Yes, and let me just say, Chairman Pitts wanted it to be known that he is absent for the remainder of the meeting because he is attending his daughter's graduation. She's receiving her master's degree. Thank you, Madam Clerk.
Okay, it's item 21-0382, Discussion and Resolution, Deposits in Minority Financial Institutions.
Commissioner Arrington?
So, yes, thank you. I am certainly in support of this. I know that the chair is out because he's at his daughter's graduation. Certainly happy for him on that. And, you know, this makes a whole lot of sense. I want to see it. I think that the language goes beyond the American Rescue Plan money, but I want it to be real clear, the general fund and all other funds. And we already, I know, passed a resolution regarding minority participation. And so I don't, I don't know why the resolution that we already passed about minority participation in contracts, I guess that's different than where we hold our money. But to me, the intent was there to make sure that a certain percentage of all funds were going to minorities. And so I certainly will be supporting this. I don't know if we want to hold it or not until the chairman gets back so that he can, you know.
The chairman told me to move forward.
Move forward, okay. Add his input. But, you know, certainly, so the only thing that I would like to see is to make sure that this is done across, you know, across all funds and not just the American Rescue Funds at 200 million. We got to include the 1 billion. Not the 200 million. We got to include the 1 billion. 1.2 billion. You know, we need to make sure that there is, and I forgot what the percentage is in the participation thing, but it seemed like it was like 30% to 40% or something. So whatever, whatever we need to do to make sure, we need to make sure that we're doing this. This is, this is part of the American Rescue Plan, making sure that money is distributed and particularly to minority and female-owned banks. It only makes sense. So, you know, I don't know if it lists a certain percentage. I know it says the 200 million. And to deposit American Rescue Plan Act funds and others into, I want to identify the others as the 1 billion dollars that we're already managing in general and all other funds into minority and female-owned institutions is what I would like to see.
Is that an amendment? Commissioner Arrington? You requesting that it be amended?
Yes. And apparently, the county attorney is saying that she didn't have time to work with Felicia on this. Do, Madam County Attorney?
Oh, in 0382?
Yes, ma'am.
That, that's correct.
So do we need, is this something that we need to work with Felicia on?
Well, I guess.
Yes.
I would suggest that you do because one of the issues is going to be state law that requires that any institution in which the county is going to invest its funds has to meet certain requirements. And that would be sort of a precursor, but I think that's embedded in that, that request, as long as it's an eligible institution.
Yeah, I think that language is in there. But if you, you know, if you and/or Felicia need more time, Felicia, look like you were going to say something. Help us out.
No, I was going to say, I was not aware of this until yesterday. So I have not had any discussions with anyone regarding this item.
All right, so we'll move to hold, I guess, so that you and perhaps Ms. Whitmore can have time to make sure and the Madam County Attorney can make sure that we're running on all cylinders. But we certainly want to do this post haste and make sure that it is available for all the funds.
So the motion on the floor is to hold with Commissioner Abdurrahman moving to approve that. And do I have a second? Okay, absolutely. Can you press that button? I don't see you second on the screen. All right. Did I accidentally hit it? I accidentally hit it pointing at it. Commissioner Morris?
Well, thank you. Well, I'm glad we're holding it because I had not seen it really until this morning. And I looked at it and I thought, this can't be legal as written. It seemed to be directing, in effect, all funds to be done here. And I know we can't have quotas and we can't have a set percentage and all of that. So this seemed to be not only a set amount, it seemed to be 100% of it as written, so.
Good, I wasn't saying anything important anyway. I was just saying that when I looked at it this morning, I thought this can't be legal as written. I know, I'm totally supportive of the concept, I think that the chairman intended here, which was to be an appropriate amount of the funding. But as written, it seemed to be requiring that we put 100%, which is a heck of a quota. And we can't do quotas anyway. So I'm glad we're holding it for law and procurement to take a look at it. And I'll be absolutely 110% supportive of it when it's fixed.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. Oh, Commissioner Ellis, you didn't, you took, okay. All right, well, the motion on the floor is to hold with Commissioner Abdurrahman. And I will go ahead and second it then. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the motion to hold passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item?
Back on page five, 21-0366, Purchasing and Contract Compliance, Request Ratification of Countywide Emergency Procurement.
Is there a motion? Move, all right, move approval. It's blank. Is there a second? Okay, Commissioner Ellis moved to approve and Commissioner Morris, second. Please, no speakers on the floor. Please open the vote.
The vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Next item?
21-0368, Finance, Presentation Review and Approval of the May 19th, 2021 Budget Soundings.
Move Approval.
Move Approval by Commissioner Morris, second by Commissioner Ellis. And are there any speakers? I have a question. Let's see. I guess this could be Mr. County Manager. I know during the last meeting, I asked for the actual source to be indicated on the spreadsheet. And I noticed that that actually, someone has provided that, so thank you. However, you did not provide a key so that people know what the acronyms stand for. So I got a lot of requests for, what does the acronym stand for? So if you could provide a key for these acronyms, that would help. And on the last page, it has a lot of janitorial services. And the question that was presented was where are the janitorial services being provided by location? Because there are, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven.
Madam Vice Chair, we do not have that as part of our budget soundings. I'm not sure of which document.
I think we already voted on that.
366?
It's 368.
Oh, I waited too long, I'm sorry. I waited for everybody else and got left behind. Okay, sorry about that.
Vice Chair Hall, we can provide that information.
Thank you, I appreciate that.
The location of where the janitorial services are being provided and a legend on future procurement reports of what the acronyms are.
Thank you, appreciate that. Sorry about that. I waited for everyone and got left off. All right, so the motion is to approve with Commissioner Morris and second by Commissioner Ellis. Please open the vote.
And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. 21-0369, Finance, Request Approval of Recommended Proposal to Prepare the Fulton County Annual Cost Allocation Plan.
Motion is to approve by Commissioner Ellis and second by Commissioner Morris. Any questions? Please open the vote.
And the vote is open. And the motion passes, six yeas, zero nays. 21-0328, Registration and Election, Request Approval of a Statewide Contract to Provide Temporary Staffing Services.
There is a speaker in the queue, Commissioner Ellis.
Yeah, we obviously heard substantive public comment on this issue, this item, earlier. And one of the things that I just wanted is to bring to everyone's attention, you know, this is directly from the Monitor, Monitor's report. Our office is under this consent decree and they're monitored. It provided this statement within it, which I think is relevant to this particular item. Says Fulton has leaned very heavily upon an army of temporary workers to fulfill the litany of tasks that must be completed from logistics to processing ballots to scanning final results. It would perhaps be best to offset this number of workers with stakeholders from the community who would like to get involved in the electoral process. By conducting multiple interviews with temporary staff, it has made clear that some have no keen interest in participating in this immensely important process, which is perhaps to blame for some of the sloppy clerical errors and logistical shortcomings that have plagued the complicated electoral process. And, you know, and just sort of the light of that commentary within this report, I was hopeful that we would see a different type of staffing plan coming out of elections. You know, but it does not, that does not appear to be the case. It appears to be sort of continuation of what we had. I think obviously, there's a role for staffing within the context of what we do. And I'm going to be mean Happy Faces. They've served us very well in certain, certain areas of the county and some of the services they've provided. But it would seem that we are, have become overly reliant upon temporary staffing in the elections process. And perhaps there are different ways to engage the public, you know, for those, for early voting, for signature verification, adjudication, warehouse, et cetera, where we haven't been. So I'm not in support of this particular item, you know, given some of the feedback that we've gotten from the Monitor. I'd like to see a different type of staffing approach from elections going forward.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Hausmann?
Yes.
I'm sorry, staff.
Yeah, who's here from elections? I don't see Mr. Barron. Okay, kind of surprised by that. Good to see you, Nadine, but, and appreciate all you do. But I would think a $7 million item might warrant the election director's presence here to answer our questions. So I'm a little disappointed in that. So I bet I will ask you my questions. How many workers are you anticipating using with this proposal? 7.744 million dollars.
This particular proposal, it's going to cover over 400 temporary staff positions for each of the 2021 elections. It'll include system specialists, logistic warehouse staff, registration agency staff, and advanced voting poll workers. It'll also include election day security personnel and poll technicians.
How many poll workers do we estimate we need for early voting?
For early voting, we need approximately 295 for the runoff and double that for the actual election on November 2nd.
So the election day needs 295 as well? Same as early voting?
No, early voting needs, early voting needs 295 for the runoff.
And on election day, how many do we need?
For election day, we need, it's 255 locations at the current time. We're trying to increase that to 271. And we're trying to staff that with four to six poll workers per location.
Can you just do that quick math for me?
I need a calculator. So we're looking at 1,530 approximately.
So 1,530 for election day poll, people in the precincts, correct?
Correct, but Happy Faces does not staff election day poll workers. They staff advanced voting poll workers. The only staff they provide on election day is the security and the poll technicians. They do not do the entire 1,530.
Do we utilize only Happy Faces for early voting?
Yes.
Why is that?
That's because we have the, we're trying to get the contract. We had a state contract with them before, and we're trying to get that again now. We had other temp agencies last, in 2020, but they had deficiencies. Happy Faces was able to assist us in filling those deficiencies.
So we don't have any plan to recruit other workers from other places other than Happy Faces for early voting? We're only going to use temporary staff for early voting?
Technically, no, because a lot of our poll managers work both. They work advanced voting and they work election day. So they've been working with us for years. They've been, they have not technically been recruited from Happy Faces, but they are, they're under the Happy Faces pace schedule when they're on advanced voting, on advanced voting side. But they have not been completely recruited by them.
What are the worker requirements through Happy Faces to work in a precinct?
They do, they check skill sets, experience, and location needs. If they have past experience and technical, technical experience, they also check that as well. And they also do a background check.
Do they need to live in Fulton County?
For election day, they must live in Fulton County, yes.
That's not, through Happy Faces, you just said that was.
Right, so for, they do not need, they do not need to live in Fulton County for advanced voting.
They don't?
But I can't say, no. For, I can't say that we, from the numbers from Happy Faces, 80% of them do. All the managers do and all the system managers do.
I thought that you had to live in the county.
Actually, SB 202 is actually changing that. So it's actually, if you're in adjacent county, you will be allowed to work at a polling site, but it's not required.
Well, I share the concern about relying so heavily on temporary agency to do this. So if we're not even including the cost of election day in this staffing plan, what's our total number expected to be for staffing this upcoming election?
For this, you're including, you're asking for the number for election day as well as?
Correct, I want to know what we're going to spend.
So you're looking at over 2,000 people for election day and advanced voting combined.
So what's our personnel cost going to be?
For personnel cost for advanced voting, it is going to, for this, for this particular request, we're actually, it's going to be for the municipal contribution, for temp staff, for Happy Faces, it'll be 4.6. And for the runoff, if all the cities have a runoff, it'll be 1.9.
I'm not asking the revenue we're going to generate. I'm asking the cost.
That, that is the cost, 4.6. That, that is the cost, four point six million.
So you're asking for seven point seven four four, but you're saying on early voting, the staffing cost is four point six of the seven point seven?
Four, we're, that's for the entire election cycle, that's for both elections.
But you just said you're not using them for election day.
I'm saying the, the total for advanced voting to cover, what we're proposing today is to cover advanced voting, the poll technicians, and the security for election day. That's all included in what we're asking for today.
Is there any effort to use community members during early voting, or are you totally reliant on uh, temporaries, temporary workers for early voting?
Um, some of, a, a lot of our, we have people that come from ACLU and other, and Chambers of Commerce, but we do not completely rely on Happy Faces, no. As I said earlier, some of these people um, came from different sources. They just get paid, that's the funding. So we use that as our, pretty much our payroll process for advanced voting.
Are we still paying a flat rate for poll workers, or is there, is this by the hour?
It's a flat rate for poll workers. Advanced voting, it's um, it's hourly.
Why is there a difference?
It's the amount of hours that they work. For election day, it's one flat rate. They just work for one day, and for advanced voting, it could change depending upon if the, um, if they have to do some paperwork after, when the polls close, and they, sometimes they have to do some reconciliation documents once the advanced voting sites close. They work for a week maybe after the advanced voting sites close.
Well, you know, I, I for years questioned this process. This is nothing new. These questions for me are nothing new, you know that. I feel strongly that we should be relying on community members that are, care about Fulton County and that are dedicated to the election process rather than temporary workers that are one and done and that we didn't ever see again and have no allegiance to the county. Um, I would much prefer a different staffing plan, as Commissioner Ellis stated, and the reasons from the Monitor's report are just one of the reasons I'd like to do it, but more than anything else, it's the sense of community that we're lacking by using these temporary workers. So I, I'm just not going to be able to support it either.
Well, I will say that the poll workers that work with Happy Faces, we've been with Happy Faces for over seven years, and the majority of them are, have come every year. They do not, they're not one and done. They do come back, and they also work on election day.
Well, again, the Monitor did report specifically a lot of issues that he witnessed in his short time with us with regard to using these temporary workers, and I just think we can do it better than that, and so I'm just not going to support it.
Okay.
Thank you, Commissioner Hausman. Commissioner Arrington?
Is this time sensitive?
Um, yes, it is. Um, I want, I'm not going to give you the time, well, yeah, we are, we need to start recruitment, so we want to make sure these people are coming back, the ones that have worked. Like I said, they have been here for seven years, but we want to double check that nothing has changed with the current climate, so it is time sensitive that we want to, we are starting to be proactive to make sure that we're fully staffed and ready to go for election day, so we would just, I, I don't have a date for you, but I can say that we do want to have this done as soon as possible.
Okay, but so when are the elections? I mean, you're talking about, no, the November election?
November second, and then the runoff is November thirtieth.
Okay.
And our staff actually, I, I retract my statement, um, because we're all, Happy Faces also covers the warehouse staff, system specialist staff, all those people would need to come back actually into the office in June, so it is time sensitive when it comes. I was thinking of strictly the poll workers, but it, we, all that, all the warehouse staff is also covered with that as well, and absentee staff, registration staff included. So we need all those people onboard by June.
And apparently the, the owner of Happy Faces just passed recently.
Yes, he passed on Sunday. But they have capable staff that is able to assist.
Yeah, I guess the founder, and I guess he and his son have been running it. Um, all right, um, you know, one of the things that I would suggest, and, and I don't know how this, you know, could work, but it seems to me to make sense that if we have Fulton County residents who want to do this, maybe we could instruct or encourage Ha- Happy Face to hire some of those Fulton County residents first, right? Before getting people that aren't Fulton County residents, and maybe that is a, a way to kind of meet in the middle and make sure that we have, we can meet the time sensitivity that you need and at the same time kind of address the issues that Commissioner Ellis and Commissioner Hausman were, were speaking of, you know, hey, we've got Fulton County residents that want to be part of this process. We shouldn't lock those people out of the process, uh, so maybe we can, you know, move forward with Happy Faces, but instruct or encourage them to primarily use Fulton County residents where they, you know, where applicable.
They did state that they're eighty-seven percent Fulton County, but we will encourage them to increase that number.
Oh, so they're already eighty-seven percent Fulton County residents?
Yes, they are. But now that SB two oh two has passed, um, you know, they are, we can, they can recruit outside of that, but like I said, they're at eighty-seven percent at this point.
Okay, yeah, I don't think we want to encourage them to recruit outside of that, but I mean, certainly, there may be some, they may not have any choice. Uh, and so I'd rather have somebody from outside the county than not have anyone, and so, but uh, certainly our priority would be Fulton County residents, and I wonder if it even makes sense to do people in that district, right? You know, you don't want somebody from Milton driving down Stonewall Tale, um, or Welcome Hall Park, or vice versa. All right, um, you know, um, this is a not to exceed amount, so I guess up to, I, I'm, I'm fine with supporting it, um, but I would like to have the idea, because it sounds like there will be an additional request to come back for the runoff, is that?
No, this will, this will cover the runoff as well. It will color, cover the entire twenty-two one election cycle.
Okay. All right, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Abdurrahman?
Thank you for coming today. Um, we heard a lot of information at the public comments section, and the good thing that I've been blessed with is to have a mighty six staff, that I immediately gave a directive to get some information, because I needed some more information to make an informed decision, but I would be remiss if I didn't say this off the onset. I want to confirm, this is a minority owned business.
That's correct.
Okay. Let's hold the rest of our vendors to the same criteria that we're holding the minority owned business to, because out of sake of being fair, I will not mention the other businesses that I've had issues with in their products or services to Fulton County, and I have not heard a peep about them. And so let's be fair. Now, am I fully, um, do I know everything that I need to know about Happy Faces? I am uh, one with enough to tell you I don't, but I know enough that I need to know more. Uh, in saying that, how long have you had the contract with the state?
Um, I, I would defer that to our
Commissioner?
Strategic Director, but they've been with, Happy Faces with us for seven years.
Okay, so you've been with Fulton County for seven years?
Happy Faces are...
Happy Faces?
Yes, they've been with us for seven years.
Okay, and have you had a contract with the state?
Yes.
For how long? Approximately?
Commissioner? This is Felicia Strong-Widder-Curb with
Thank you.
Purchasing and Contract Compliance. Um, Happy Faces has held a contract with the state of Georgia for twenty years, over twenty years.
Okay, thank you. Um, do we use you for any other things with Fulton County? Do we use the services of Happy Faces for any other things that Fulton County is involved in?
Yeah, I'm not with Happy Faces, but yes, they, we, I believe that Happy Faces are their departments that they work with as well.
Well, maybe that's a question I need to give to you.
Yes, Commissioner.
Okay, so what other departments do they uh, provide services for?
Um, they provide services for community development as well as senior services.
Hmm. So let me get this right. You all uh, supplied senior services, uh, a vendor for senior services, and also a vendor for the community development? But you all are so-called missing the bar? Well, you know, well, let me pull that back, let me pull that back. I apologize. Let me run that back. That, that gives me a big question mark. I, I would be remiss if I did not say that, but that gives me a big question mark, because you're not going to fail in one area and exceed in other areas. You're either going to exceed in all areas, more than likely, and you're going to fail in all areas. So I, that's a big question mark to me, and I hope it is a big question mark to my colleagues, because I want to be fair, but let's be fair across the board to all of Fulton County vendors. Would you say, and maybe you can't answer this, uh, maybe you can, um, I can remember even before I was elected to this body, that Fulton County struggled with staffing needs and when no one else was able to produce, was Happy Faces one of our vendors that stepped to the plate and produced uh, workers for when no one else was either able to do it or wanted to do it? Is there someone that can answer that question?
Yes, they, the Happy Faces did step up and filled all the deficiencies that the other temp agencies could not fill.
Um, I've got, I've got, I don't know if we can hold this or not. I don't, I don't know if holding this, Vice Chair, I, I would like for you to, to maybe say a word to this. I don't know if you know enough about it or not, but this may be something that maybe need to be held, because I don't have enough information, but something is not quite right. When we hear in the public comments section, a whole bunch of the, the things that you all are, are being alleged to be problematic, but if you're doing senior services and community development, are you problematic in that area? Because I don't have that information that you are, and so I don't know if we can hold it, if it needs to be held, but that is a concern that I want to relay to my colleagues. Thank you.
And ma'am, just for clarity, these are elections personnel, not Happy Faces personnel.
Right. Is that a substitute motion to hold?
Um, when, when, when would the, because you said, and Nadine, I know, I know you're not with Happy Faces, but, because I don't have anybody else to answer the question. Would holding this hurt what you all need to do? For two weeks, would it, would it hurt?
Well, we need staff to return on, by June, by June sixth, so um, I would say yes, it would hurt us. We have to prepare for advanced voting. We have to implement a new inventory system, so yes, it would hurt us.
And our next Board of Commissioners meeting is on June
Second.
I have some comments that may help.
Okay, thank you.
All right, you yield the floor. Um, Commissioner Hausman?
Yes, thank you. So is there any difference in the pay rate between when we um, hire a temporary worker for this, for the election cycle, directly or through Happy Faces?
Happy Faces charges an hourly rate, and then election day has a flat rate.
So is it more expensive to go through Happy Faces, or what's the price difference?
Um, I do not know the exact price difference per hour, if you were to break down the flat rate for the election day.
Well, I mean, it matters. We're talking about a lot of money here, so I'm just curious, is it more cost effective if we recruited community members ourselves, or if we use it's a, a temporary agency?
Um, because of the amount of people that we would have to recruit, uh, we do not have the staff in, we're in, in elections to process the payroll. It is an extensive process to process that, so I would say it's more cost efficient to go to a temp agency, because we would have to still hire people to do the payroll process for all these people.
So during the November cycle leading up to that, we got a lot of volunteers that offered to help us work. Are we calling those people? Are we trying to reach out to people that we used back in November or back in the last cycle?
We used them for election day is what we used, because um, advanced voting is a three-week process, and a lot of people cannot take off work for three weeks and work every day for three weeks, including the weekend.
Is that mandatory that they have to work every day for three weeks? We don't allow any flexibility for folks?
Um, it would be extensive to train that amount of people if we, we'd rather have...
Say they normally work on election day, they know how to, to do the work. They can't work three days a week?
We would have to do more training if we did that. We, if we, if you're going to increase the staff, that means if, because we're going to, we'd rather have the people there consistently for three weeks than to have somebody for two days, three days, and keep changing staff.
Again, if they are with us and they know our systems, that doesn't to me to seem to be a hindrance to allow for flexibility.
Election day has a different training process than advanced voting.
I'd like to see the numbers, please, on the difference if we hire them directly versus going through a temp agency. Can you get that for me, please?
Yes. Thank you, Commissioner Hausman. Commissioner Arrington?
What I would say to you, Commissioner Hausman, is we do not want ten thousand contractors. We want one general contractor. We want to run this business through a general contractor. I'm happy we're getting, or we're asking the general contractor to supply those people from Fulton, but we don't want to have to deal with ten thousand different individuals. You want to deal with one person and then let those ten thousand individuals deal with that contractor. Now, Commissioner Abdurrahman, uh, you know what this is. This is the Republicans talking about fraud. This has nothing to do with Happy Faces and the job that they did. This is the Trumplicans talking about fraud in this election. There was no fraud in this election. Don't believe the hype. Don't believe any of that stuff you heard today. It was talking points. It were Trumplican talking points. Happy Faces did this. Happy Faces liberal. Do not, do not fall for that. That, that is, that is nothing but hogwash. The election was fair. It was, it had integrity. It went off virtually, uh, without a flaw. I think there was a pipe that burst at State Farm Arena, but that wasn't our fault, nor the fault of the election staff, nor the fault of Happy Faces. And so you, particularly when you said this is a minority contractor, that really made me question those Trumplican comments that we had today. I, now I know I want to vote for it. All that did was solidify my vote for it. Hey, I'm happy if those people want to work. We have Fulton County residents that want to work. Let's put them to work. Let's tell Happy Faces to hire them or to give preferential treatment to Fulton County residents, maybe even particularly those that live in the district or whatever, but we don't want to deal with ten thousand different employees or two thousand, or whatever the number is of employees, independent contractors on our own. We want one agency. We want an agency to hire that we hire and then have that agency deal with those people. But, you know, uh, and, and Happy Faces has done work, you know, you wouldn't have a contract with the state for twenty years if you had not been performing. You would not have a contract with Fulton County for seven years if you had not been performing. You would not have that contract over multiple departments, uh, in Fulton County if you're not performing. So um, you know, they, they've done a good job. Don't, don't, don't buy into that hype. Don't buy into this, this, this Trumplican theory that Happy Faces didn't do a good job just because some people weren't happy with the outcome of the election. That's all that is.
Thank you, Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Ellis?
Chair, um, just one, one of the things I want to go back to, my original comments and the stuff that came out of the Monitor's report, and essentially that was that we are over-reliant on temporary personnel, and um, I don't want any of my comments to be misconstrued, and I'll restate what I said earlier. Um, this is not about the, the firm that we're potentially contracting with. Uh, we have utilized them throughout the county and had a lot of great success, uh, particularly in areas like senior services. It's less about the firm we're using and more about how we're choosing to deploy temporary services, and that goes to management. And where we have management that utilizes, you know, temporary services effectively, it works effectively, and when you get over-reliant on them, then you potentially, you run into other issues, and I think those are the types of things which, uh, the Monitor was speaking to in his report. Um, I do have I do have a question for you in terms of during the past election cycle. Was Happy Faces the only firm that we contracted temporary staffing services through?
No.
How many firms did we acquire personnel services through?
Approximately five.
Five different firms?
Yes.
You know, so I'll just posit to you, Board, I mean, this is really just speaks to, you know, quote unquote, a management issue in terms of how we're managing overall elections. If we're having a contract with five different firms, and I'm guessing that we had to go engage some of these other firms for more technical related staff where Happy Faces wasn't necessarily their forte in the past?
We went directly with the equipment manufacturing company for some of the temporary workers that came in.
Okay. So, I mean, my objections to this are really less about the particular firm, but more about the extent to which we are relying upon the staffing services to run elections, period. So, you know, I just want that to be cleared on the record that I think the company itself is a fine company and somebody that we've obviously had a lot of success with, and I don't want them to get mixed up in different issues and different, you know, different remarks that are being made here, so.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Commissioner Abdur-Rahman?
I have a quick question and maybe, I don't know if our county manager, or maybe Sharon may be better, but how burdensome, if we're saying to what Commissioner Ellis is saying, that it's a problem to have a temporary agency to staff the elections, how burdensome would it be for the county to take that role on? Would we save money? Would we spend more money? Would it be maybe a burdensome feat? I would like some way in from that perspective, if you're able to do that.
Typically, when we hire temporary staff, we still run them through our HR processes. So I think that in order to streamline it, we would need to give some consideration to what we may need to change within our HR processes to make it less burdensome a process to go through. That is the benefit of using the third-party temp agency is that they are constantly in the mode of recruiting individuals who are looking for some sort of employment so they have, in essence, a ready pool. And then to Nadine's comment about being able to attract the same people back, you know, they have been successful in doing that. We did, many years ago, manage all of this internally and had some successes and some issues, but I do think we would need to look at revamping some of the HR requirements to be able to make this, if we were to do it in-house, streamlined and less burdensome. I'm not sure if Stacy Jones, our deputy HR director, would want to add anything to that.
Yeah, we agree with the comments that Sharon has made. We had some discussion about that earlier today after hearing those comments that came in. And some of the things that we see would be issues are some of the current policies and procedures that we have in regards to recruitment and selection that would really slow down, I think, the process in terms of the date that they need to get people on board in order to start. So that is a main concern. Also, in the past, I think, dealing with non-permanent or temporary employees that we had in-house was being able to backfill for turnover quickly so that their processes could continue. So that was an issue as well.
Well, my concern, I guess, with this, because I am trying to be fair, but my concern is we were operating in a pandemic and there was issues across the state of Georgia to get personnel, especially for to work the polls. And so I'm just wondering, were some of the supposed problems that were laid at Happy Faces' feet, was it actually because of them and not because of the pandemic? I'm just concerned that, I know for myself, being someone who ran for office, that it was hard to get staff for Election Day, advanced voting, vetted, and all of that across the board. And so for you all to do it and pull it off, to me, was commendable, but I think if we are trying to hold the fact that there was some issues that happened during a pandemic, I don't think that is actually a fair assessment, in my opinion. And I just want to go on record that I am trying to be fair and I'm trying to look at all aspects of it, but the election year in a pandemic was a struggle and I think for the most part Fulton County pulled it off. Fulton County led the way with all the problems. So I would hope that the decision that we make with Happy Faces is not one that's partisan, but is one of fairness. And if we're going to hold them to a certain bar, and this is a minority contractor, let's do that across the board, Fulton County. Let's be fair. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Commissioner Arrington?
I wanted to address Commissioner Ellis's point. I think his point is a valid one. He stated, you know, that the report came back saying that there was too much reliance on temporary staff. I think the issue with that is I don't know that that's something that can be solved overnight, right? I think we could instruct staff to come back and say, hey, over the next two years, we want to see a reduction from this reliance on outside contractors to developing a way to have more staff. I just don't know that that's something that we could solve, Commissioner Ellis, between now and November. You know, I think we've got, I think the show has to go on in the meanwhile while we address that issue, if you will, you know? Because I don't want to discount the issues or report that says, hey, there's too much reliance on, you know, outside contractors. You know, I think we need to address that. I think we need to look at it. But I don't know that I want to address that between now and November while you're preparing for an election, but certainly after, you know, a year or two, you know, the next two to five years, we can look at reducing it maybe five or 10% each year so that at the end of, you know, two or three, two to five years, there's a reduction that makes sense. So I just wanted to say that to Commissioner Ellis. I think it does make sense to address the reliance on these outside agencies, but I think the show has to go on in the interim.
May I make a comment?
Please.
We do rely on the temp agencies to recruit workers for us because if to, we, there's no way we could, the way elections is set up, we have to have temporary employees to pull off an election. What we do need to do on our end is streamline our training because we do train the temps. Happy Faces does not do that. They recruit the temps and they, there is no, at no time during training or hiring process from Happy Faces or any of the temp agencies are there partisan parties disclosed. But as far as what the report that we received, we do realize we have to streamline our training, but that is not based on, that is not Happy Faces' job to train, we train. And we are clean, streamlining that process, but we do need to rely on them to recruit, help us recruit.
And so you all are willing, you acknowledge that report and you're willing to address those issues that contain therein?
Yes.
Awesome.
Thank you, Commissioner Arrington. Commissioner Ellis?
Thank you, Commissioner Arrington, for your remarks. And just, and I'll be, I'll be brief and I'm not really, really directing my comments directly to you all that are before us right now, but, you know, I guess this is just more of a general statement, you know, to sort of go on the record with. I do acknowledge the show does have to go on, but these remarks have been out there for a while, right? And I do expect our Elections Director and our Board of Elections to, when statements are made like this, it should be automatically going into mode, just like we would with our own management team, about let's work to develop a plan to address it and what, whether it's remarks last week or, you know, whether, you know, some of this discussion we're having right now, and I realize that you all, you know, are somewhat the messenger here, you know, for your boss. The general theme seems to be we'll get around to it later. Later needs to stop, it needs to stop being later. It needs to be, we're getting around to it. We have a plan. Here's what it is and here's what we propose to do. And I might, again, I'm not directing that at you. I just, if Mr. Barron is listening to this later after his day off and those Board of Registrations and Elections has listened to that, I hope that they will hear those remarks. So, thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Ellis. Any further questions? Okay, well, I do have a question or two. I do agree that we need to look at this process. I recall as being Chief of Staff to Commissioner Joan Garner, that in 2012, we had over hundreds and hundreds of temps and part-time employees ourselves in Fulton County. I had a report pulled at that time and asked that the county manager at that time start looking at, should we actually improve this by just hiring county employees instead of continuing to hire temps and part-time employees who had no benefits? We were literally not doing that. We were doing them a disservice, actually. And there were temps and part-time employees through the county that had been here for 20 years at that point. So I think that we do need to look at this process and see, can we utilize HR from this point? Or how many employees have we hired through this company? I'd like to also see the request that Commissioner Housman asked for. I'd like to see that data. And also I want to address some complaints that came to me following the elections. There were poll workers who consistently get hired year after year through this company and they complained about a specific supervisor. And the thing that caught my attention is that these constituents who were employees during the election did not know each other, but they all consistently spoke about a particular supervisor that gets hired every single time there's an election and they get hired as a supervisor. And so I want to make sure there's some kind of performance evaluation process for these employees, especially those that are put in supervisory positions, because several of my constituents said they will never come back and work again during an election because of this supervisor. So I would hope that you would look into that and ensure that there is an evaluation process in place. Thank you. So we have a motion on the floor to approve. You did not move with your substitute motion.
No, I'm not going to go with the substitute motion.
Motion on the floor to approve. Commissioner Arrington moved to approve. Seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Please open the vote.
And the motion to approve fails. Three ayes, two nays.
Next item, please.
Bottom of page five, 2-1-0370, Diversity and Civil Rights Compliance. Request approval of a recommended proposal to provide qualified foreign language interpreter translation services.
The motion on the floor is to approve by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Please open the vote.
And the motion passes. Six ayes, zero nays. On page six, 2-1-0371, Real Estate and Asset Management. Request approval of statewide contracts to purchase 64 total 20, 21 vehicles and equipment.
The motion on the floor is to approve by Commissioner Morris. Is there a second? Seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Please open the vote.
Five ayes, zero nays. Under Health and Human Services, 2-1-0372, Public Works. Request approval of a statewide contract to provide laboratory supplies.
Motion on the floor is to approve by Commissioner Ellis. Seconded by Commissioner Housman. Please open the vote.
And the motion passes. Six ayes, zero nays. 2-1-0373, Community Development. Request approval of the Community Development Block Grant COVID-CV-3 Resolution.
The motion is to approve by Commissioner Ellis, seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. And I would like a quick overview by, is this Dr. Rochelle?
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, because this is very good. I noticed that there are, there's a lot of great stuff in this. If you could just give a quick overview?
Yes, ma'am. So HUD provided additional funding through the Community Development Block Grant to support COVID-specific projects and several cities in our cooperative agreement have submitted project ideas. Specifically, we have College Park that we're recommending approval for a $100,000 broadband project and a utility assistance program. We have East Point that is requesting $500,000 for emergency rental assistance and mortgage assistance. Haightville is requesting park sanitation for $1,800. We have Union City COVID test kits and emergency assistance, $350,000. Palmetto COVID test kits, $120,000. And the city of South Fulton, emergency assistance for $300,000 totaling 1.3 million.
Am I looking at the wrong document? Mine says 1.7 million.
Yes, ma'am. There is 339,000 in administrative, in administrative cost.
All right. Thank you very much, Dr. Rochelle.
You're welcome.
And please open the vote.
And the motion passes. Six ayes, zero nays. On page seven, 2-1-0374, Community Development. Request approval of a resolution to authorize the adoption and approval of the 2021 HUD Annual Action Plan as amended.
Motion on the floor is to approve by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Please open the vote if there's no questions.
Madam Chair, this is the revised version, correct?
Yes, this is the revised version. And the vote is open?
And the motion passes. Six ayes, zero nays. Under Infrastructure and Economic Development, 2-1-0375, County Manager. Request approval of a resolution to repurpose existing general fund capital funds from roadway transportation projects.
The motion is to approve by Commissioner Housman. Is there a second?
The, um...
Oh, there's a speaker?
I apologize. The chairman has asked for that to be held. Is that the 21-0375?
375, yes.
Yes, he has asked because he had to leave if we can hold that as well as the 21-0376. He asked for both of them to be held.
Commissioner Rahman, would you like to hold both the action item as well as the presentation for both of those?
Yes, please.
So you said 376 and 377?
375. Three seven five and three seven six.
They're both action items.
Is there a timeliness to this matter?
There is not a time sensitivity to either item. Um, on the road resurfacing project, it's a request to increase spending authority with a firm that we are already working with. And so I don't think that there's a time sensitivity to either of them. They, they could wait, um, two weeks. And the first one is really the first, uh, official quarterly report of the Renew the District Initiative that, uh, has an accompanying, uh, action item with it.
And he has the information that he wants to input. Unfortunately, he had to leave. So he asked that I bring it before the board to, please hold both items, please.
Okay, is that, um, I did, I asked?
Point, point order, Madam Vice, Vice Chair. Um, and, uh, are we sure that it's three seven five and three seven six? Not three seven five and three seven? Which one of these items? Does three seven five go more with three seven six or three seven seven?
What was the question, Commissioner?
Is three seven five more associated with three seven six or associated with three seven seven?
Three seven seven is a standalone, uh, airport lease policy that the board is being requested to approve. Those are unrelated.
So unrelated to three seven five?
Unrelated. I believe that in terms of relation, both three seven five and three seven six have to do with the Fulton Industrial Boulevard.
Okay, but three seven seven is unrelated. That was my question.
Unrelated. It is related to the airport.
But three seven five and three seven seven both have to do with the airport.
Correct. Correct.
So there is some confusion. Okay.
Thank you. Would you like to?
I'm happy to hold all three of them.
Is that a substitute motion to hold all three? Commissioner Morris, I heard you.
Any of those times since, I, I know the first one, three seven five is not. I suspect three seven six isn't either for two weeks.
Yeah.
We won't spend it all that fast in two weeks. And three seven seven may be the only one that might be time sensitive.
The only reason I believe three seven seven may be more time sensitive than the others is because I think we have, uh, two or three interested parties in the lots that we have available. Those discussions have been, uh, continuing. So, uh, in order to avoid additional wage, um, in terms of a discussion and negotiation with those parties, we may want to move forward with, uh, zero three seven seven.
Is that your sense, Dick?
They may appear related. They actually have nothing to do with one another. So two are transportation. Yeah, two are, the first two are transportation funding related. And I think there's a discussion that probably needs to be had about those.
I agree with that.
The other one is purely our lease process for hangar space at the airport. So you could act on three seven seven, completely independent of the discussion that needs to be had on the first two.
Then Mr. Ms. Vice Chair, I would suggest that you could rule without objection, we hold three seven five and three seven six at the chairman's request and, and then move to hear three seven seven.
All right. So the substitute motion on the floor is to hold three seven five, three seven six. Commissioner Hausman has the motion to approve and seconded by Commissioner Abdur-Rahman? Yes, yes, ma'am.
What's on the, I'm sorry. What's on the floor right now at this moment?
To hold three seven five and three seven six?
Okay.
Okay? All right.
If there's no objection.
If there's no objection? Please open the vote.
Do you need a mover?
Just need the motion to hold, yes.
I thought it was already, oh, you took yourself out?
Well, I'm, I'm moved to approve it, so.
Okay, well, um, the motion to hold is Commissioner Abdur-Rahman with the second by Commissioner Morris. Please open the vote. Thank you.
And the motion to hold passes. Five yeas, zero nays. To... To hold three seven five and zero three seven six.
Thank you.
Two one dash zero three seven seven. Real Estate and Asset Management. Request approval of ordinance to amend Chapter 10, Article 2 of the Fulton County Code of Ordinances to create a new section for Section 10, 130, implementing rules and regulations for the leasing of property and facilities at the Fulton County Executive Airport, Charlie Branfield.
All right. There is a motion to approve by Commissioner Morris, seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Uh, any questions? Seeing none, I have, um, a question on this. I'm assuming it would be Madam CLO?
Yes, ma'am, with the help of the county attorney.
Okay. So if you look at page two of three, number two, uh, the line that says... For interest expressed, it's the non-aeronautical, uh, number two. For interest expressed by one party or more than one party provide non-aeronautical services at the airport, the county may elect to negotiate with one party or another, develop a competitive solution in accordance with the county's procurement process, or inform the interested party or parties in writing that the county is not interested in entering into negotiations for the proposed services being offered. And my question is, who makes the decision and why not have a competitive process? Because if you look at the aeronautical one, it is very clear on who makes the decision. But this one in particular does not.
Commissioner, Vice Chair Hall, thank you for your question. I think the FAA is fairly prescriptive about leases around aeronautical uses. And that's why you see a lot of specificity within the proposed lease policy around aeronautical uses. For non-aeronautical uses, and as, as an example, uh, the one that comes to mind most recently is our UPS, uh, non-aeronautical use. I think what we're trying to do is give the county manager and, and county executive team the flexibility to develop certain standards, um, around what we would like to achieve from an either airport master plan and overall strategy standpoint. Um, so I'll, I'll ask Kay to answer the technical question of why competitive process is required in one, but not the other. But that was our general thinking in coming up with those terms.
Thank you.
To the extent that the Board of Commissioners determined that the policy ought to be to have it competitively bid, um, you could, you could certainly do that, but it isn't required, um, out at the airport for the non-aeronautical. So if you, but if that's something that you all thought you wanted, you could do that, but it's not required.
Okay. My concern is that you have it in one and not the other, and it's the one that is not under the FAA. And also because I've had someone who was going around saying that they were discriminated against as a minority on, um, getting one of the hangars. And I do not want that type of thing out there. Um, I want to make sure that we have a fair process across the board. So if we need to make it a competitive process to ensure that that's, um, what happens, then please, um, do that. And let me make sure I got all my questions. Yes. All right. Thank you so much. And we have the motion on the floor to approve. Please open the vote.
And the motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays. Commissioners' action items. Two one dash zero three seven eight. Request approval of resolution by the Board of Commissioners.
I'm going to, um, excuse me one second. Um, Madam Vice Chair, um, I think we should hold this item until we have a full board, uh, full board. I know the chairman wanted to be here and we were hoping we were going to get to it. But, you know, unfortunately, you know, graduations do come first. And now that we see that a Commissioner Arrington wanted to weigh in on this as well and he has left, we're talking about $206 million and we're talking about a very serious issue. And I know in my conversations that the chair was very, uh, excuse me, he was adamant about weighing in on this. And since he's not here, plus Arrington had to leave as well, I would like to hold this item.
Okay, motion on the floor is to hold. By Commissioner Abdur-Rahman. Is there a second?
I'll second, but, but just as a point of order, typically, as you know, Vice Chair, when the sponsor suggests we hold it, we don't really usually take a vote to hold. But, but you're, you're chairing and I'm, I don't mean to interfere.
Okay, well, we'll hold it.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you.
Bottom of page seven, two one dash zero three seven nine. Request approval of a resolution amending the membership of the Task Force on Elections within Fulton County and for other purposes, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
Should we hold this one?
Commissioner Arrington is no longer with us, so, uh, let's hold this one.
Okay, the next item is...
Let me see, what's the next one?
Chairman Pitts.
No, Chairman, uh, said move forward with three eight zero.
Okay.
But...
Commissioners...
Well, we'll hold this one because we don't have Commissioner Arrington either. We don't have a, hold that one as well.
The next two are also Commissioner Arrington's.
Want to take a vote on it?
Vice Chair, I'm, I'm, I'm going to lead to your, your, uh, your leadership. We can hold it.
All right. Um, sound the next item, Madam Clerk.
Commissioners' presentation and discussion items. Two one dash zero three four two. Discussion, update in, of activities of the Atlanta and Fulton County Recreation Authority Grounds, Facilities and Security Committee, sponsored by Commissioner Arrington.
We need to hold that for Commissioner Arrington. And the next one, and I think that's his last two. And, uh, let's see, Pitts, uh, we did three eight two. Three eight, three eight one. We can do three eight one.
Two one dash zero three eight one. Discussion, Invest Atlanta Board of Directors, April 15th, 2021 Meeting Summary, sponsored by Commissioner Morris.
This will only take an hour or so, so we'll, we'll do it. This is the usual minutes summary of the Invest Atlanta Board meeting of April 15th. So you can see the actions that they took. And if anybody wants any additional information on any of those, I would be absolutely 110% delighted to get it to you.
Thank you, Commissioner Morris. And three eight two, Commissioner Pitts is not, we did three eight two, three eight three, Commissioner Pitts is not here. Um, we will hold that.
And we have an item on consent.
Right. The item on consent, please sound that item, please.
Okay, on page three. Two one dash zero three five three. Finance. Ratification of April 2021 Grants Activity Report. This item was removed for separate consideration by Vice Chair Hall.
Yes, and I just wanted to address... Two that were on here. Let me find it. Hold on one second, please. Uh, the healthy, advancing health literacy to enhance equitable community responses to COVID-19 and home-delivered meals. Uh, one for, from the granter of U.S. Department of Health and Human Services and the other one from Atlanta Regional Commission. I just wanted a quick overview of those two.
Okay, Vice Chair. Uh, good afternoon, Commissioners. Um, the one you're referring to is a $4 million grant. Actually, it's 3.9999, you know, a $4 million COVID-19-related grant. And it is going to be for, uh, implementation of, uh, strategies to enhance COVID-19 testing, contact tracing, uh, mitigation measures, and, uh, boost vaccine implementation, uh, vaccine confidence among, uh, minority population within the county. That is what that, that's what that $4 million is going to be used for.
And that's with Morehouse School of Medicine?
We're going to be partnering with, uh, Morehouse.
Good, good. And the, um, the other one which seems to be addressing food insecurity?
For seniors, and that is for, that is in the amount of $319,000. And, um, it's a grant from, uh, Atlanta Regional Council. And, uh, it will be used to provide, uh, home-delivered meals to homebound and disabled seniors facing, uh, food insecurity due to COVID-19.
Good. Thank you so much.
You're welcome.
So, um, motion on the floor... To approve by Commissioner Morris and seconded by Commissioner Ellis. Please open the vote.
And the motion passes. Five yeas, zero nays.
And Madam Clerk, that's the last item on the agenda for today?
That is.
All right. And if there is no objection?
I'll move, we adjourn.
All right. No objection, then meeting adjourned.
...or if you need reasonable accommodations, including this communication, in an alternative format due to disability, please contact the clerk to the commission's office at 404-612-8232.